We'll go ahead and open up our reception for Tuesday. Um, if you have any cell phones uh that need to be silenced, now's a good time to do it. And uh please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Schulberg, would you do us a pleasure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so uh Tony, are there any additions of allegiance?
Yeah, I have two deleash, or two deletions, excuse me. I have two additions. Landfill's skits, skit steer purchase. And the twenty first amendment OJ agreement number one five nine eight one eight. And that kind of piggybacks on the other one you just received. I mean half a no, so I thought I'd just.
Right.
Mop them together instead of leaving them there two weeks.
Yep.
But they're both, both positive.
Alrighty, um I guess we'll take on the the first big topic of today and crum right with that administrative fees.
This topic really backs the house, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I think that's what happened, the wind kind of gets going over, so.
It's an ongoing conversation.
That's, so. What, what, what I thought would be helpful for this whole topic is kind of going back to. Why we have them, some of the federal rules around them, and then how it's calculated right now. Seems like we need to start from that point before we like can talk about what should change on it. So first of all, uh federal rules allow and want. Costs to be charged directly to federal programs if it's possible. So that's always the first rule. If if we can pay something directly from a fund or a department, that's where the cost goes first. Things that cannot be easily diddyed out that specifically. Can go into a cost allocation plan as long as it's fair and reasonable for the federal guidelines. So to give an example, and I think this one is is always. I use it quite a bit, but the one example that I have that makes a lot of sense is the audit. And we pay thirty six thousand dollars a year for the audit. It is not billed in a way that says this is this department share. This is this department share, it's just a one month sum. So then it's on us to figure out if, and again, we can choose. It's on us though to figure out how do we allocate that if we do. Nothing in the rules say that we have to, general fund can pick up all these costs. But if we're going to diddy them out to federal programs, they have to follow some. Reasonable and justifiable formulaic language. So the policy as has been changed over a few years. Is really kind of brief. Um, we have what we felt in the past were six departments. That provide service to everyone in account. Um, so again, like, so one of the other one that gets diddyed up pretty easily is the IT. So we have one, one contract for IT services. But it is not billed by this department, this fund, everybody like that. It's one, one contract price to provide all the services for Lake County. Um, right now, those, those costs include. Desktop replacements that are generic. So I can, my desktop that's sitting at my desk. Can literally get picked up and reconfigured and go to the sheriff's department. There's nothing specific about the equipment I'm using. I have specific software, but not a specific piece of equipment. So when things are generic, they run through that IT cost because they can go anywhere at that point in time. Um, servers, you know, if a server has to be purchased to provide. Specific uh connections or backups or processes. It may be charged to a specific department. Um. So the other things that the computer uh or the IT department paid for are printers. Uh the copiers, uh email subscriptions.
So the amount of devices basically.
Yeah, and so every year.
And service form.
Yeah, that's weighted to like Josh does an allocation of like how many devices per department. How much time they average, there's some departments that need more IT support than others. Uh, so they kind of wait each one.
So he gives me, I, it's on your, but he gives me this spreadsheet every year and it it shows.
Josh does.
So for instance, like in the sheriff's department, there's seventeen staff. They have eight physical and virtual servers. And he waits server um support heavily. Because it takes a lot of time to make sure those servers are up to date and running appropriately. Compared to like a printer, which he waits very in phones, you know, but those don't take a lot of service time. Um, but he literally counts up all the devices that are in departments and that's how he allocates their contracts for. Not every um funded department uses our internet services or our phones here. That's another one to talk about is our phones. We do not bill funds and departments by their phone use. It's one bill to Lake County for this building and then it's allocated through this um IT department. So people that are paying their own phone service, like the fairgrounds or department, they're outside of that calculation. If they're not involved there. But if they're using our email and they have a C O dot lake dot O R dot U S domain. They're part of our email, which requires a monthly cost for email and then and also backup.
What is the monthly cost, is it rated per person?
So we buy it in blocks and then we have like a basic block and then for each one I've added since we've gone outside that block. Going to the next level, it's five bucks.
And then we have backup, like cloud storage and backup on top of that.
And like we pay, part of the monthly service thing is the actual like software subscription. But you know, the Microsoft product. So that's part of the cost too, it's not just like email access, it's like the whole thing, like Microsoft.
And so what does that cost?
Email, I think we run close to eight thousand, I think is what I budgeted for this year.
And every employee has.
Yeah, and in in your documents are the actual costs that we are diddying up in in admin, so. In the technology department, Microsoft three six five licensing. For the nineteen twenty fiscal year, we spent seventy five hundred. Software was ten thousand five hundred, um websites twelve hundred. Uh, computer components, which is those desktops and when we're replacing those was nineteen thousand.
What?
Internet services was twenty seven thousand.
What departments have employees that don't have?
Room department, um janitorial.
Like it.
And so. Very few.
So the internet services are twenty seven thousand.
Yes.
But not, not every, again, some, some.
That's our total.
That's our total and then we have departments that are not located in this building that have their own internet service provider. They pay that amount. So that, that amount is just allocated to people in this courthouse that use that.
That seventy five hundred, that wasn't per month?
No, that's the annual.
The year.
Year.
The network support, that's the big one, that's, that's ACTEC, that's our contract with them. That cost is ninety nine thousand five hundred. For that, this. So the most significant user of Josh's, according to his allocation, in his most uh time is sheriff's department. And you think about all of the technology that they have to have in their vehicles, on their bodies. And then the server connections and things like that, so it's that, that staff.
So there'd be body cams and different like that.
Yes, yeah.
So is that, does he list that like sheriff's department?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Yeah, we got that chart guide here. The sheriff's department is like eighty four point five devices on that.
So does the sheriff's department pay the highest amount?
So on your, the. Oh, I shouldn't have brought, I should have brought my pink ruler. Sheriff.
Hmm, we have a long discussion on that budget.
Yeah, they, they paid twenty eight thousand five hundred for like IT.
If that's not eighty five percent. Um, that will be totally different.
Well, remember, that's just the sheriff's offices, not the jail also, jail separate.
Those were. No, and that's, that's the devices.
That's just on computers.
I'm, I'm just going from the total amount that we pay IT. And they're using eighty five percent of it.
They're not using eighty five, they, they have eighty four point five devices out of three hundred and thirty five.
That, that's class, a little less.
Yeah. Not even. It's about a quarter.
So there's how many total?
Three hundred and thirty five.
And how many do they have?
Eighty four point five. That's total devices.
I thought you said one eighty five, sorry.
Okay, so that's, that's one, one, one department and how we allocate. Are there questions about that one?
So do we take like the number of the prices and write it into the total cost and that's their?
Yeah, so the weighted support, the weighted support is how it's diddyed out. So the weighted support goes into the total cost for that IT department excluding phone and internet. Because if, if they're not in this building, I'm not gonna allocate phone and internet charges from. So phone and internet goes off of the different device count that we know isn't in this building or connected to this building for internet.
We get a list of what it pays.
So it's, it's, you guys should have it and it's the back page of that and that's this page, hopefully it's. It's a lot of, it's, I mean, it looks pretty gobbledygook. But it's each department and the cost charged to that department or that fund.
Sometimes comes in handy on those big spreadsheets.
So Ian, uh. Do you have any recommendations for? Keep it as is or uh? Or you recommended any changes?
For the computer department, I mean, I, I don't have any better ideas. Uh. For allocating the costs that we incur right now unless we truly have Josh do account for his time. You know, if, if, if he actually sat down and, and.
He would.
Instead of just going, okay, there's these devices and I, and, and the weighted support of it, he, he actually kept some kind of activity log.
He knows to take it.
Okay, then maybe we should, you know, actually look at the actual time that is spent for different.
But I think if you did that in one year, it might be really different than.
The next.
It is on average, you know.
Yeah, right, right.
So I think, I still think where we're at using weighted devices is a better. Um, measurement. You should, you could have a special project one year.
Somebody could do that while.
Introducing something different or new. And, and then you'd be paying a, a, a much higher fee than normal should be.
Yeah, right, yeah, it's, I think, I think from like his, he reviews his tickets and things before he talks, he gives Ian his figures. And I think he's got a pretty good average on. What his day looks like, you know, like how many hours a day he spends supporting different departments.
So. So like uh commissioners are the highest use here.
Well, we are administration, so.
Commissioners for, um, are you, are you looking at the admin cost total page? That looking at?
Yes. Under the total number, it's about a hundred and twenty four thousand.
And like, I think most of Mr. Bailey's time is directed towards the commissioners department, except like ten percent or something.
Yeah, let's, uh, so county council is part of our, uh, cost allocation. That's a service that is available to every, you know, funded department throughout the county. Um, in twenty fourteen, after discussions about the admin fee, the commissioners directed that ninety percent of county council be charged to the commissioner department. And so um the remaining ten percent goes out based on rough guesses from Jim Bailey periodically. I don't ask him for that number every single year, but it's a, it's kind of maintained a little bit about. What, right, so ninety percent of, that's why the commissioners looks at, ninety percent of that is going.
That's Jim Bailey, that's our legal counsel.
To. Yeah, yeah, although every funded department has access to these devices.
Right, but typically it's us that, that interact with our legal counsel on department issues.
Right. So again, that's a, every single one of these actual costs that the county incurs. We can choose whether we're going to allocate it or not. And then if we choose to allocate it, how do we allocate it?
So the second highest uh admin cost here is road crew. They take a pretty big hit from treasurer and business.
Yes, so right now, the business department. Is split, so first of all, we look at what, how much, you know, how much does the business department cost? And um two hundred and fifty six thousand. And then we said that sixty percent of their time is devoted to accounts payable. And forty percent of their time is devoted to payroll. I think if, sorry, I'm backward. Sixty percent to payroll, forty percent to accounts payable. And I, I think if, if you really. If we were to do a time study there, that's not very accurate. I think that payroll side of it, when we think about payroll being also HR, is a whole lot more time of those departments than sixty percent. So Jay basically doesn't do any accounts payable. He's not, that's not part of his role at all.
He doesn't do any of the findings. He does the HR and legal and that kind of stuff, but not that many of them.
So you had it backwards, but technically it should be.
It's, it's on, on, I just said that wrong, on the formula itself, it says based on sixty percent payable, forty percent accounts payable.
And there's. Right.
But that's including the whole department, saying the whole department spends forty percent of their time and energy to accounts payable. Which is, I'm not sure that's accurate. So accounts payable, we look at transaction. Okay, so actual general ledger transaction details by funding department. We discount um departments that are able to enter their own data, which right now is just the road department. So we discount their AP charges by thirty three percent because of their data entry ability. Again, the, the, the process of AP doesn't end with the data entry though. You know, now there's the balancing of it, the issuing the checks, the, the sending those out, the ten ninety nines, the reporting of it. The reconciliation of all of that work. The audit record of um expense transactions. So. Uh payroll, the payroll portion of the business department, that sixty percent is diddyed up by the workers' benefit charge. So the state of Oregon requires us to pay whatever, I can't remember what it is right now, but per hour worked. So it's the most accurate number we have. So we can look at what we're, what we're paying that by funding department, that's the most accurate number we have for how, like if it's full time, part time. You know, how people are working, so that payroll chunk is diddyed up that way. I don't, I don't, Jay maybe might have other ideas or options on how to diddy that up, but.
That one is pretty, I mean, it's calculated on every hour that an individual works. And so if you, you know, look at that departmentally, you know how much time each employee is putting in and it can. It seems logical to determine how much it costs a department by using that. Um, and it, it, but if you wanted to get really detailed, you could maybe um. Take out payroll and separate that to HR and, and whether or not there's a difference there.
So when you're saying payroll, are you, are you talking about the treasurer's line? Are you talking about the business?
Those business lines.
So.
So I take, we take the business department, the two hundred and fifty six thousand, we say sixty percent of that cost is payroll associated, HR payroll associated.
So the payroll and, and the accounts payable are all within that business.
Or in the business services. Yeah.
Line item. It's just the sixty percent of that thing.
Oh, and another big item that I forgot to point out, their whole department, that two hundred and fifty six thousand is reduced by ten percent because of services to the library. So we take a big chunk off the top because hey, we're also helping, we're doing the library's payroll and AP as well. Okay, so we say, and that might be, I don't, ten percent might be okay for AP, ten percent's probably not okay for an HR payroll standpoint, but. That's what we take off the top for services to the library.
Just ten percent.
Yeah. I think that's generous.
Ten percent for the library is quite a bit of money to charge them.
Yeah. That's pretty significant.
They take a lot of time, really. They don't do anything themselves, so.
And I see a two hundred and forty thousand, I don't see a two hundred, I think it's six thousand.
I will keep that.
Is it gone up since this?
Um, two hundred and fifty six is the total, like dollars in the department. There's IT and facility costs on that, so it ends up being allocated two hundred and forty thousand after the library comes off. I've got more details here.
Yeah.
So my department is the other one that's a significant cost. Uh, my total costs. Are a hundred and forty four thousand. And I take one third of that, completely one third of it off the top for services that I provide to the taxing districts. So I say one third of my time is devoted to property tax, um. Collections, uh distributions and tax district support. I feel like that's generous. Cause I don't know that it takes me a third of my time to do that, but it seems there. Um, so out of that hundred and forty four thousand with computer costs and facility costs, I ended up allocating a hundred thousand, a hundred and one thousand. Uh, right now, it's allocated based on actual revenues. So actual revenues received during the course of a fiscal year. Not, it doesn't look at beginning fund balances, it doesn't look at transfers, I don't look at property taxes because I'm excluding. General, like that aspect of my role. I don't look at motel taxes and I don't look at capital grants work. So it, it really tries to look at operating dollars that come in for all the funds and departments. And then it's, you know, it's a percentage issue, a ratio based off of that number. We did look at a transactional base um admin fee from my department a couple of years ago. Where I'll, I'll tell you the, the hangup on that one, that I have a depart, I have a fund. I have a fund um required by ORS for the clerks to pay for storage and record fees. It gets one dollar out of every deed recording. So eighty five dollars is going somewhere else, but one dollar is going to this fund. Well, when I hit that fund with a transactional base admin fee, I, I pretty much wiped it out. So it was difficult to make that meet the federal fair justified, you know, reasonable. If I look, if I look just at like transaction based there.
Right.
Revenue based, you go, okay, they get a dollar versus eighty five dollars going everywhere else. So it, that, that gets it back to.
So the idea was to kind of split that between revenue and the transactions.
Because I do understand if I, if I get one big transaction, which happens periodically, you know, we get a million dollar distribution on something. You know, it's a one transaction.
Yep.
So I, I get the workload sense of that is, well, that one, that one million dollar transaction as far as a workload is the same as the dollar transaction. However, the million dollar transaction isn't done with that yet either. Now I'm investing it, I'm looking for opportunities to earn more interest on it.
Right.
I'm accounting for it in different ways to complete its federal, so there's recording much different than the dollar transaction in.
And I would be looking for a bunch of investment opportunities for the dollar.
No. So the, the decisions on, you know, and I. I have not replaced a part time position in my department. Um. That, that helped with admin fees, I was doing something less, you know, I had less cost to allocate everywhere. You know, I think we're mindful that what we're doing costs people money. So the last department that we allocate, I don't, I don't know if there's any questions about that or. Or suggestions.
So you're saying the road crew has more. Transactions or, or dollars that you have to deal with.
Yes.
On a daily basis.
Yes.
It doesn't end just with one single transaction.
No.
Or so than any other.
Right.
They have the largest. Yeah, but it's, no, honestly, you know, one of the things that I think that there's been some conversation about in the past is. The uh, the dollars going to computers and IT from the road department. And trying to determine whether or not that's an appropriate expense.
I looked at that. They're not even in the top ten. They're, they're in the bottom ten, I guess.
Right, the question is for them, is that they, I think, as far as the actual IT support that they get and the actual amount of time that they. Spend on computers, but.
They are, they use a lot of IT support.
Well, I know they have the flood and everything and they, they went through all that stuff, but see, that's, that's been the conversation, I think, is the road superintendent. Feels uh ninety nine percent of the work that he does is not in front of a computer, it's working on the roads and. On the phone with people and try and get information, so it's. Still kind of that, that conversation about that, it's a small number, it's. Not significant to us, I think, when we look at this and compare it to all the other IT needs that we have. Yeah, doesn't make the top ten, but.
So with some of that, any supplies or equipment that can be used by another department comes. So with some of that, any supplies or equipment that can be used by another department comes out of the IT fund. But anything specific to that department that can't be transferred easily to another department is charged directly. So I'd say some of their frustration has been they don't want to pay extra IT costs, but some of their stuff is department specific. That isn't fair to other departments to just give them a favor when our policy is put in place to, you know. The sheriff's department has to pay for their specific things. It's not fair to them to be like, okay, I'm sorry you have to pay admin fees for IT, because I think it's dispersed pretty fairly and maybe, well, anyways, I'm off my point. I think there's some confusion on like what's, what should be covered and what isn't, maybe, maybe you guys can help clear some of that confusion.
Well, I think sometimes that I, that those dollars are looked at by other departments as. Like a. The way we pay Jim Bailey, basically, you know, we have him on a retainer. So I think it's looked at as somewhat of a retainer sometimes. I could be wrong, but uh. Then when people have actual needs and they have an incident come up with computers or they have a flood event or need to replace computers, they have to, that's all additional dollars. The admin fee comes top of it. The admin fee doesn't change. And the admin fee doesn't go to pay for any of those additional. Computers who may get lost, so.
Computers are budgeted for on a rotation, so everyone is equally included in the rotation. So if something like a flood happens, that's not budgeted for, so that's above and beyond what we have budgeted.
Right.
Six thousand.
Yeah, so. We're all one county. And. There's every year we've been battling over these administrative fees and it causes us to separate. Our departments instead of uniting us. There's fifty six line items on your list. The idea would be to split it all fifty six ways evenly. Some would be paying more than they, most would be paying more than what they want them to do. The rest will be paying less um. The thing is, is that if we're going to move as one unit and we all pay the same. For the administrating fees. I think it would unite us instead of divide us and. It would be a lot easier to do it that way, try to, instead of trying to find individual data, yeah, some of us are going to be paying more. That's part of playing on the team and, you know, we really want the team scenario to go through that's part of it. And my thought is, is you either split it all fifty six ways or you don't charge it all and.
I, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying in principle, but I think the federal guidelines would say are, is that new? Is that split necessary and reasonable across the board for every federal award that the county has? When you, when you're just doing it that way, there's no, there's no recognition of. What it actually takes to provide the service. You're just saying, okay, everyone's, we don't, we don't care what it costs to actually provide the service for your specific purpose. We're going to charge you a fifty six of it.
So budgeting law requires that we are transparent and what are the actual costs for every department? That's really the purpose of the admin fee, it's not, it shouldn't be us, it's all every, it's all the county's money, we're all like. The only purpose here of charging admin fees is really to, to accurately reflect the true cost of that department to the Pope. It's uh, that's what budgeting law requires. This, I don't know, can give you the, the, kind of the background here, but she took over as the budget officer, what, twelve years ago?
Yeah.
And she took this head on and moved us forward light years and this has been a discussion every year and. We feel like we've gotten to the point where it's, I mean, I'm sure it can be tweaked every year, but. By Billy, we have looked at this from every angle, there's, there's nothing you could bring up that hasn't been talked about and discussed, so. I just say that as, as, as background here, we're. The goal should be really to be accountable and, you know, comply with budget law. And. It, it shouldn't be fighting over dollars. It's all the county's dollars.
Well, so I, I, I agree that, you know, we, we want to be transparent. And, and for the most part, you know, I mean, I've had conversations with you guys for the last couple of years, we've been talking about this for a while, about these admin fees. I think part of, you know, one of the reasons why we're talking about all this today is because we want, we need to be transparent with the public too. As to make sure that they understand that we're having these conversations right here, look.
Yeah.
Um now there's a lot of different things we could do, and you know what the actual percentages on, say, the revenue based versus transactional based allocations are? We kind of talked about that a number of times um in the past, in the years, and look at maybe implementing a little bit different algorithm. For um determining what these admin fees cost, breaking it out with revenue versus transaction.
So for my, my department, I do have that split on this page here. Um do you want an example?
Sure.
Okay, so and I can, I'll give you the road department, that's the one that gets impacted the most because they have the most revenue. So right now, um it's twenty eight thousand just based on revenue. If I, if I did the allocation based on three quarters, seventy five percent based on revenue and twenty five percent on a transactional level. That admin fee goes to twenty one thousand, twenty two thousand. So that six thousand is, is dispersed, you know, other places.
Right, you still end up with the same number at the end.
Right, because we're starting with the same number, you have to, yeah.
Right, and you're working your way backwards and, and that's, that's appropriate when we all, we all agree that all of this stuff costs. And in order to comply with the federal guidelines and everything else, we need to be able to capture those realistic costs.
There's, there's the, the kicker with that, I'm sorry I have this fund, but the clerk's records funds. Their, the clerk record fund, the dollar, the dollar that goes, their, their revenue is twenty two hundred dollars. If I do the three quarters on revenue and a quarter on transactions, their admin fee is twenty two, twenty five. I have just wiped out every single revenue dollar they've received. That's not quite fair. So I don't. We can. I don't. We have, we have to treat everybody the same, it's tough to make exceptions here and there unless it's very justified. I mean, I don't, I don't know, yeah, the other. But there are several counties that do it the way this formula was devised. In fact, this came from Plano County back in, so to talk about history here. When we paved Rabbit Hill Road, that was um paid for by Department Corrections to get to the prison. The county's admin fee at that point in time was three point five percent of revenue in the story. The state thought that said, that's not right. The auditor said, yeah, that's not right, and so we had to implement an admin fee, a cost allocation, and so that's where this started. Um over time, it's been reviewed by different federal agencies and tweaked over time, but that's where we're at. Um the three point five on that paving project was going to be significant to the road department, and so they were charging the state for it and, you know. When I first started at the county, the road department's admin fee was a hundred and twenty five thousand off the top, straight off the, every single year and it was, or they said computers. But then also um general fund charged the road department for ownership of the south bit. So um. There's just over, over time, things, you know, I think have improved, have gotten more transparent, have been more fair. Other counties now are talking about using software to literally implement their cost allocation plans, so they're purchasing software. And what they do is they put in, they do what I'm doing, they put in what it costs to provide all the services, who's using them and it spits out a number, but they're paying for the software to do it.
So it'd be similar to kind of what we're, we're, we're mentioning Mike, who might want to do with Josh, using his time, basically using his time steps and whatever else in town to capture what. He actually spends his time on or determine what that IT cost is going to be.
But like Melanie said, I think he actually is doing that, he's providing that way with support.
Right.
And that he's, he's there.
And like, there's always what Jay said, like sometimes there's some sort of catastrophe and one year. He might spend a significant amount of time on software, computer or something, so it's not always, it would fluctuate, but like on average, he has a really good idea.
Right, so we fluctuate.
On what he allocates his time. And that he thinks is very fair.
Well, this is a good information for me on learning. I asked you earlier about recommendations, I probably asked you that question too early. But. I haven't really heard of. Another proposal that interests me that makes me feel like, and I don't see anything that's completely out of whack either. When we're talking about computers and, and in particular the road crew and I see a dollar figure of eighty four hundred dollars. I'm trying to figure out what the issue is.
I don't know, I don't know why.
Well, the road department's not really here, I didn't talk about it, that's, but I'd be happy to have that conversation now that I know the number. Yeah. So.
I didn't.
And I look at the sheriff's department and they're paying twenty eight thousand five hundred, so they got a lot going on as you explained. So but to me, that's fair and then, and then you look at the road crew, the treasurer and the business side. Yeah, that's where a lot of their work happens and so they are paying the admin fee in other places. For me, first time uh hearing the flip side of this, but.
And I, just right now, I'm, I'm a little bit busy, but if, if you can give me like in a month, that's not quite so much, if you want me to do research on what other counties are. Truly using and doing, I, I can come back with that. I don't have a better proposal to provide right now, though, I didn't have that kind of time, to be honest. Um but if, if this is something you want.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of like with Barry, I mean, if we don't have something better. There's no use changing it for changes, see?
I, I don't think we have a change on the table either, I mean, right now, we're just, we're having the conversation because it's come up several times. We're all aware that this is a conversation that perpetuates itself every year and uh so we, we have it, we have the discussion. From Barry's point of view, that gives him some perspective, you know, on what the actual costs are, so. Work a lot of this stuff out. It's important to have this conversation so that people and us as commissioners understand why these costs are there.
So Ann, I guess uh we owe it to our employees that if you do get the time, we would like to experiment and just see what else is out there.
Okay.
And uh just see if there is a better way of doing business.
Well, and all, all of, all of us.
We're gonna share this with you.
Yeah, all of us are members of like state associations or groups of associations, so it would be nice if other people reach out to their network and say, hey. You know, what, what's working in other places of the state, like what, what is out there? The treasurer group did um have a, a little note go around this the other day about the software for um allocating. They, a lot of counties call them internal service charges. So, you know, there's different definitions and verbiage, um so they were looking at software for allocating their internal service charges. But yes, I will, I will work on that in my spare time. Yes, I have one, one more, sorry, I'm taking.
Do you have a resolution?
I do. There, well, there's two, but we can't, we're going to discuss both of them, we can't take action. Um the supplemental budget did not get in the paper, so I have to have a hearing. Noticed in the paper first. So you have two resolutions. The first one um is twenty twenty dash zero eight and it's in the matter of the contingency transfer for our medical examiner department. There have been quite a few body transports uh done this year and so this is a really small department. Doesn't have a lot of room um for unexpected things like this and so the only place to go to. Uh provide additional appropriation authority is contingency. So this increases materials and services in the medical examiner department four thousand and decreases contingency. So that one you can act on tomorrow. Is there any questions?
What's the verbiage here about the school resource office?
That's in the next uh resolution, that resolution is twenty twenty oh nine. And this is in the matter of the supplemental budget, so I, the, the notice did not, did not get published last week like I wanted it to. So this brings in additional uh resources in the Lakeview Law Enforcement Fund two oh six. For the grant that was received by the town of Lakeview in the school for the school resource officer position. And it also um increases materials and services and capital uh with, with all of those dollars. So once the notice shows up in the paper tomorrow and we have the hearing in Christmas Valley, then you can take action on the resolution. Any comments on the school resource officer position?
So, so Ann on the medical examiner one. Who was bringing the, who brought that? I mean.
I, I do as budget, I do as the budget officer because I'm seeing the costs that we're um incurring, the DA staff is responsible for paying those bills.
The medical examiner?
Mm-hmm.
So it comes through um their department.
The, the reason I'm asking is, is because. Kristen at Desert Grove does a lot of medical examiners stuff herself, she stores the body, blah, blah, blah. And I don't know if she charges them and.
The only time that she would store a body, if it was a suspicious death and requested to keep it in other ways. It would be a business cost until the, the funeral or disposition of the, the remains of the body. And if we have a suspicious death, it usually goes right to the um corner for an autopsy, so. I don't think that would fall within um her costs.
Where is the corner?
In Medford, I have them, it's not even stated.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Medford.
I think they have to transport it.
And this year we've had some significant incidents here in Lake County that they have been taken over there for further investigation.
So there's an expense there.
Yeah, this, this department handles both of those, it handles autopsy costs plus the body transport costs.
Yeah, she will provide the transport and then be reimbursed from, if, if it's a suspicious death and then be reimbursed through the.
Through this department, yep.
So what if they find that it's not a suspicious death after they get it over there and do an autopsy?
Still the same cost because it's at the request of the DA or law enforcement. Or Dr. Grant.
Yeah, Dr. Graham is our medical.
Same cost regardless of. But it's basically, we're just moving four thousand dollars over just to, you know, fund to make sure that that's.
And it'll make sure that department next year has an appropriate contract amount in it and then a little bit more on the body transport.
But we can act on that tomorrow.
I guess so.
Yeah, great tomorrow. The second one, we'll have to wait.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. Yeah, so uh I got a toss-up here. I got uh, I got Dave Burden, I got the sheriff. I don't know which one of you guys are more pressed for time, whatever you guys would like to do.
We're always pressed for time, but how long should we do it?
I don't think about five minutes.
Go ahead. Okay, you're up, Dave. Oh, good call.
Uh as you guys know, the landfill scenario.
Yeah.
Um there are some uh daily operations that we need to be fully compliant with, that's called daily covering. Uh as you guys know, we don't have the machinery to do our daily covering. Uh our daily cover isn't a whole lot, but we don't have equipment to build, just leaving the working face that we have out there for our daily covering, so. What I'm looking at is purchasing a, a skid sphere or a to do our daily covering with the track system and all that, so we can get, be compliant with our daily cover out the landfill. Or, or we have so much open face right now, our trucks won't cover it and for being flat, you gotta have a daily cover over every day, or every day you have an open face. So anyway, long story short, uh I would like to purchase uh a two ninety-nine uh there's a two ninety-nine C compact tractor for forty thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
And you went out for multiple bids.
Yeah, we went out and got close. When you're, when you're purchasing used stuff, it's hard to get comparable. So I kind of, what I went by is buying different machines that have about the same miles on it or hours on it. This one is a little bit older, about eleven hours, and it's a bigger piece of equipment that, that I found. Like the John Deere, two thousand sixteen John Deere was forty-eight thousand. And then the uh Bobcat T seven forty, and they're, and both of these are smaller pieces of equipment, too. Is fifty-eight thousand five hundred. One I want from Peterson Cat, the, the two ninety-nine C compact motor is forty thousand
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
So Dave, uh can you just give us a little background, how much of the uh open face are you using with tars right now?
Uh right now, we're probably about ten thousand square feet with tars. Our, our working area is so big, we don't have the tars covered, so. We had to start doing dirt cover, which is the daily cover. If I had one tar you could cut, but that's too much working face anyway. You're supposed to have daily cover and dirt over it. You're not supposed to have that much exposed as we give it. It's the way they started this cell before I got here, what kind of got us in a pickle. They, they wanted to do no daily covering and now I'm trying to get it down to where we can do it and, and with the excavator and a, and a backhoe and a compact, you can't do your daily cover. Just, they don't work. I mean, you just make a mess of them, you're causing more work. So with the, with the, so that being said, I only need to do the garbage that Lake County gives. It's not a whole lot. It's not like triangle that gets a lot more tenant a day than we do. It's just a work face of about a thousand square feet I can do a work face a day and do a daily cover in.
So, so the DAQ requirements is you can't have more than five thousand square feet of working face shown.
Correct.
And they have to cover it because of birds and of course.
They have vector problems, you know, birds packing up, stuff and dropping and just all kinds of strains and all that.
And the wind.
And the wind. Yeah, wind is our biggest thing.
So the alternative of that, with tars is
And, and.
Not a good option.
No, you're, cause you're, pretty soon we will have enough tars. Once, once we start our new cell and we start doing our face right, you know, daily cover that is required and what should happen year and a half ago, we don't have this issue once we start our new cell. But this is a multi-piece, piece of equipment, we can use it to tip and shed, we can still use it for our daily cover, because we'll only have so much exposure at the end of the day, take the lights. Daily cover you put over it takes you twenty minutes and you're done. You know, for that, for what's required by DEQ. And then also, and also in our working plan, we have to put a, we have to put a working plan or an operation plan uh together and give to DEQ, we have to follow that. That's what they kind of hold us accountable, is by our operation plan that we submit to. They hold accountable if we go above that, or they come after you and say, well, you gave me the offer, you're not getting what's required of your operation plan. How come?
In the only term of lenient.
Exactly.
So, so what would be the expected life of this piece of equipment? Purely, when would we need to replace it?
Oh, I would say, I'd, well, as long as you take your maintenance and you take care of it, twenty years, as long as you take care of it, you know, the maintenance. We will, if we develop a maintenance program like that.
So this gives us a really good tool to do finite work on a daily basis.
Yes, right.
And to keep us in compliance.
Yeah, to keep us in compliance or not. Cause right now with the excavator, you can't put the backhoe on there, for the backhoe, you can't run on the trash, you just either get stuck or you blow tire.
Right.
Because of the breeze or spikes and all kinds of stuff. She'd need a track system. The excavator, yeah, you can do it, but it's a slow process, because you drive a excavator dirt, you gotta drive on feet, throw it out well, and even you've got a big left, but it's not that much dirt, just to travel that far. So with the skid steer, you can just really buzz around on that and cover your, your dirt, sort of your dirt bucket or stuff like that. Just more convenient and faster in, in the location, location.
Yeah, and it's a use, it is a used model.
Yes, all three of those, if you went out to buy a new one, I'd have you be about eight months out to get a new one. Cause they stopped all manufacturer last year, they didn't, they can't get brand new stuff.
But this is. And this is under fifty.
Yeah, this one's under fifty with very low miles, two or hours, has two thousand hours on it. For two thousand eleven, they issued it to them off a, a rail or an administration. You know, be fully serviced, fully taken care of before they give it to us. And we are desperate to eat up something out there, because I've got DEQ coming on Tuesday, spend the day out there and I'm about to pull my hair out thinking that I might get in trouble.
When it's supposed to blow tomorrow.
Yeah, when it's supposed to blow tomorrow. And then.
So that's Tuesday next week.
Tuesday next week. And then on a side note, um I had the compactor go down, the transmission went out of it, so I'm without a compactor right now.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna bring that up, yeah. Yeah, that was the verdict.
Transmission. Yeah, it was, it was old, it was, it was gone, it was old, that's the one that was there.
That's why we went and had the other one rebuilt, because we knew that one wasn't going last much longer.
No, I was just hoping it'd last two more weeks. Okay, Saturday, Friday, I'm gonna go pick that motor up and hopefully get it in next week when we have a compactor up.
So we haven't projected the cost there.
Well, we can get that, if we can get that other one done, and we can set it aside and pick away, I just kind of slowly get it and take the dirt out of everyone. And then replace the transmission. The smart thing would be to do is replace the transmission and then take that new transmission, put it over and then the motor one, and we'd have a brand new machine with a branded transmission and motor, but that'd be a lot of work.
Yeah, let's just, let's just get it going, so.
We need a backup.
Yeah.
I also need to see. So right now, we'll have to use an excavator the best we can to compact and spread burdens, whatever that. I don't know yet, well, I don't know if you know it, to report it. Anyway.
Sounds good. Um, any other questions?
Yeah, so let's talk about dollars. Um there's, you're gonna have a few options of if you purchase this. Um the landfill can't afford it with its own revenues right now. General Fund has uh budgeted a transfer there. And what it looks like right now is the landfill's gonna need all of that transfer um for the loan, for the closure costs, and for uh equipment and maintenance that's already occurred. So you're, there's an option there to increase that general fund transfer. There's, would also be if you want to take community development money. I don't think it quite meets the industrial park definitions of dollars there, so you have those two options. You can also set up and increase their loan, but I don't know if you want to have that right. What I penciled out, I think it would take, if, if things keep working the way they are right now, it would increase that general fund transfer by about thirty thousand. So right now, that budgeted transfer is about a hundred and seventy-five, so it'd be two fifteen to afford this piece of equipment as well. That doesn't include what we might have to do with the compact.
That's a lot, aren't they?
Very expensive.
Yeah, shit, because all that, though.
We're trying to quit.
They haven't heard anything. You don't need to have a guy.
No way for my.
So, well, I guess we can.
So Anne, what is, so that impact does can be absorbed?
Yeah, general funds, as we know with um some one-time things that occurred this year is, you know, you know, less cost on certain things and then more revenue other ways, general funds sitting okay. It'll impact a little bit of the beginning fund balance for next year, but.
Yeah, we gotta have, so.
Now we gotta figure out what's the best place to take it. Can't keep operating without equipment.
So we gotta do what we gotta do.
Can't do your job if you don't have the proper tools.
If you guys want to get big shelves, come out there with a stretch skirt and shelves.
Yeah, come on.
And big booths.
Alrighty, well, we'll uh, we'll move on to this tomorrow, most likely. We're gonna have some time to think about it.
Okay, alright.
You're over your five minutes, so.
Yeah, sorry, Sheriff.
That's no worries.
Sheriff is good if you're dirty.
Are we out?
Yep.
Alright. Uh-oh. Let's get, get the court person first. Thank you. Sure.
Commissioner Albertson hit the nail right on the head. You cannot do your job without the proper resources. So there's two um issues I'd like to discuss today. One is civilianizing the uh emergency management position, and the other one is a request for more personnel. So what I'd like to do is just uh start with O E M position first, if that's, that's agreed. So o- over the last four, three or four years, um we've discussed this many times with the previous commissioners. They were in agreement as to uh civilianize, civilianizing that, that position. And what if we do is just give us a, a full-time body and it, it have a civilian position assigned to whoever the commissioners need, that would be appropriate. Usually that's in law enforcement, but it would be in the direction of both the sheriff and board of commissioners. Now, I know all three of you have experience with these wildfires and, and these catastrophes that we've had in the past. The, the dam that broke, overflowed up here, COVID, um.
It didn't.
It overflowed.
Good, correct.
The dam that overflowed, uh the Bratton Fire, um COVID, and then we e- even your, your, your family that managed were flooded there. That was a horrific situation. So each time we have a, a issue that requires emergency management, we lose personnel. And as you guys had, had seen out there at the Bratton Fire, we had a full-time deputy down there, we needed more resources down there, so we sucked our resources out of the town down to the Bratton Fire, then we had a shooting up here and we didn't have bodies available. So um I have talked to everybody individually, and I think we're all in agreement that it, it appears or there is a specific need to civilianize that, that position. I reached out to the Oregon State Sheriff's Association and of all the counties that are required to have emergency management, they either have a sworn personnel assigned to that position full-time or they have a civilian position. Three quarters of them have civilian positions assigned to the sheriff's office, because they uh recognize the need that keep their personnel and resources on the streets of the public as opposed to be assigned to one position. Uh O E M is, is becoming more and more restrictive. It's also requiring more time of the person assigned to that. If I, when I have my deputy out at uh on the street, because we are low on, on staffing, the commissioners have needs for O E M specifically, because it's a commissioner's responsibility to have that position. So there's a need for the commissioners to talk to that personnel, yet they're out on the street, and when they come in, we take a person off the street and we're consulting with the need that you have. It, it's a frustration for you, because I'm telling that deputy, you're assigned to the street. You get back out on the street. It's a frustration for the commissioners, because you guys have needs that, that you have to deal with this emergency management position, and so there's a conflict. If there was a civilian position, my recommendation would certainly be assigning to the sheriff's office, because that's where they're going to be most of the time. But it would be in the other direction of both the sheriff and the commissioners, so at the need of the commissioners, when you needed to talk to that person, you just call and you did. You know, meeting in your office, whatever the basis, because there's not a need for me to have that person on the street, so. That would be my, my position on this. Under Sheriff, do you have anything to?
Nope.
Well, it's a further strain on you as well, because we're, we're looking to pull, your deputies basically off the street during the crisis typically.
And not, not only that, it's because the more requirements that is on that deputy, they have mandates to have tabletop exercises, they have mandates to go to Salem or wherever they have their meetings. They have mandates uh um to do this or do that. It, it, it's a never-ending battle and, and the deputy assigned to that is getting pulled from several different directions. I'd say three different directions. Getting pulled most by me, because we need the coverage, getting pulled by O E M, and sometimes getting pulled by the board of commissioners, because you guys have to do this. Uh my recommendation would be to civilianize that position um and have the deputy that's assigned to that be a full-time deputy instead of being part of O E M. I was looking at, and there was an interest in having Troy Armstrong be part of that, but my understanding of his position was on of this position, going back to the.
Going back to this.
All I know is the sheriff is exactly right. You know, we had the flood a year ago, then we had COVID, then we have the drought, and then we have fires and I worked hand-to-hand with Daniel on every one of the occasions as well, so the rest of the commissioners, but I kind of got myself in a pickle with the sheriff, because I called I kinda got myself in a pickle with the sheriff because I called Daniel. And I didn't come to my office for a meeting without notifying the sheriff first, not even thinking about him being. A deputy also and having deputy duties to do. And we need to be planning, we need to be ready for every emergency, and I don't think we are. It's not the fault of the sheriff's office or the OEM person. I think it's the fault that we just don't have time. We live on a fault line. Um, it's just a matter of where we have. A major problem. If our road systems go out, we only have one grocery store. The food supply chain can be broken very easily, and we need to be on top of this. One person cannot do OEM and re-adaptment here. It's just too much work.
Sheriff, could you uh give us the breakdown again of what the state provides money-wise for this position?
How about if I turn that over to my buddy then?
Okay.
I could give you an idea that he, he could. So, so typically, um, they consider it full-funded, um, that we, um, we abide by all the requirements. Um, with our training, with our quarterly reports, with our um desktop exercises, um, live-scale exercises. But their hundred percent funding doesn't a hundred percent fund the position for it. Then the county has to match. And so Anne could probably give you the hard dollars uh that it comes out to be. But ultimately, when we proposed this, um, I believe it's two years ago. It was about seventy thousand dollar impact to the county for a fully funded um civilian OEM position. And then to backfill the funding, which is about forty percent of Deputy Tag, who is earmarked for this position. That would backfill the grant dollars that are offsetting his wages currently, and then that would fully fund out of the position. Because we felt like the average, when we did um some surveys with other counties. Is the funding for a full-time sworn deputy is much higher rate than a civilian uh OEM position. And so that was basically what the cost of the county would be, and obviously over the last couple of years, there have been some inflation and some rise in costs for benefits and what have you, but. That was roughly the number that we had provided at that time. And we, we actually offered three different options, and I didn't bring them with me today, or I, I didn't feel like we were trying to go through this detailed information. But I can still provide those to you offline out of here. So we proposed three different options. One was to hire another deputy and continue on with that person doing the OEM. The other option was a civilian position, a standalone, um, and I, I can't recall right off the top of my head.
Just keep it in.
Okay, um, and we showed the costs and the impact to the budget um based on each one of those. And um, the recommendation that we had was to hire a civilian physician that would be responsible for that. The other, the other thing that we had always envisioned that that OEM person could accomplish is grant. Research and, and grant um applications to seek funding streams that we have been unable to due to time constraints. I mean, nobody has enough time to dedicate um some of the HSI grants. Harney had a, their OEM guy here a couple of years ago, he dedicated five straight months to a grant, and I believe they got four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars towards their communication system. And we could desperately use that. We just don't have the body that we can dedicate that kind of time to. So that answers that question.
So Anne, correct me if I'm wrong, OEM provides sixty thousand, forty?
They pay, they pay fifty percent of the cost of the position up to sixty thousand.
Up to, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
So we, we've got a hundred percent funding, what they consider a hundred percent, but that only funds up to sixty thousand, and the loaded deputies is about a hundred and five. So that's the offset with that. But there's no more money we're gonna get from OEM, I guess is what I'm saying. They're giving us a hundred percent of the allocated monies that they have available for that position. And we're required to have a match. So they'll only give you sixty thousand dollars, just the most they will give you. That's a hundred percent funding from them. But then you're required to have your match dollars on the other side of that.
So Sheriff, we talked to, and this is down the road, if we do hire an individual OEM, they get their feet under, under them. They can take over possibly the search and rescue also, right?
Absolutely.
And so it would be OEM and search and rescue under one person, which would also relieve you guys a bunch of time.
Although search and rescue falls under one of the mandates for the sheriff's office. We do have the same deputy assigned to search and rescue as we do OEM. But it does take up a significant amount of time. For the most part, we have an exceptional crew of, of search and rescue volunteers. And there's several of them right now that, that take on that administrative uh management-type role. Where the deputy is not mandated to be there on all occasions, but does coordinate the call-outs and, and the search criteria when there's any. Yet, but yes, you're absolutely right. We can utilize that person at the same time. And this is what, what we would do, uh, of course. You get a civilian physician in there. We're not just going to say, okay, you're OEM, you're search and rescue. The deputy assigned to that would be a mentor to them as long as they needed to have that mentor. To get, if you put feet on the ground, upline the contact information they need, just the basic, you know, how to run the operation, so. It, it's not gonna be, here's your new job learning.
Yeah.
We'll keep them in for a significant amount of time.
I'll tell you what, with the flood, it was clustered when it first started. Then we got Scouplin involved, and once we got that, where you had people that knew how to run I C, all of that. It went along, I guess, but it's a community system.
And that, that I C S works tremendously if you can get the people to implement it right away. That's the biggest problem, is the implementation of the I C. And then once that's implemented, you have your assigned personnel, then things seem to flow a lot smoother. I make a lot of that as a learning curve for everyone. I think that there's declarations that have to occur prior to getting those onboard. And if you don't take the proper steps, it's, it seems. I don't know, I guess it, it seems annoying to the community. Well, why aren't they helping us? Well, we haven't got to the, unfortunately, there's a bunch of red tape you gotta cut through before you can get that assistance. So is there any questions on, on the OEM?
So.
What I would have would be, you said this, that there are three options on OEM.
Yeah, I can do that.
You did say that um we are required to backfill the current person's pay. Did you say that?
I, I don't quite understand.
So if we take away the OEM money away from Mr. Tag. We have to backfill, is that, is that required?
OEM um pays part of his position right now. So if you hire, if a, a new physician is hired. We have to make up the money that covers the deputy's position that's currently there. They will no longer be getting that funds for his position. It would be a full-time lawsuit. And the, it, the impact, um, we did it before, we worked with Anne. Based on the grant monies, the match monies, and the backfill monies, it was a total impact to the county budget, it was about seventy thousand dollars.
See, because OEM paid for approximately half of Daniel's wages, and so you'll have to, since they're gonna have a full-time deputy. We'll have to backfill about half of his wages. Speaking of the grants, and I don't know if you guys were aware that we've kind of hired. A person that pays us per grant. She's out of bend, and so if you guys have any kind of grant you wanna go for, send her the information. She charges us per hour. She get out of charges is pretty much on the amount of work that she does. So most grants, she says, are around twenty hours. And some go up to forty hours that she'd have to pay. But we have somebody that starts sending everything we got.
But the, the problem with that's always been, um, no different than Anne has always offered to, to help out with the grants. But it takes hours for us to compile the information for that individual to write the grant. And so it, having the person that'll write it isn't necessarily the problem. And if you don't have someone that's writing the grant that lives this every day. The significance and the importance of certain things don't, don't hit the grant. I, I mean, I, I don't know if that makes sense to you guys, but if I've got to supply ten years of statistics for a grant. That's hours and hours and hours of manual labor to try to give that information, to put in a document that they can put in the, the grant. And uh, we have, we have a couple grants that we do on our own, and, and they're labor-intensive as they are. I mean, our uh O H V grant through the Oregon State Parks and Rec. That's probably an eighty to a hundred and twenty-hour grant that we, that we write every other year. And we've always been very successful at it, so I have confidence that when we're writing about things we do every day, we're very good at writing them. And so I would challenge, slightly challenge, someone that, they're a great grant writer, and if it's in their context, they're great at it. But I don't know that that is a good fit for, say, a radio communications budget, or, you know, um. An S R O, or backfill um deputy power or vehicles, or that sort of thing. I mean, maybe it is, maybe it's great, but the problem is we don't have the time to compile the stats to feed them the information to write the grant.
Wow, I disagree with you. I think that if you put the time and effort into compiling the stats, that this person can give you, can really help you beat some stuff. And I, I don't know of any grant that takes eighty to a hundred and twenty hours to prepare. I, I think that's, that's high. I, I, I guess I challenge you to try it. We're, we're offering this service. And yeah, it's gonna cost some money um to pay for her services. But I think we're also missing out on grant opportunities because we're not even applying for them. So if we can possibly get that front-loaded of something that you want, uh, give it a try. And let's, let's try it. And let's, let's not just uh keep trying to do it the same old way. And I know you guys are busy, and uh, I just encourage you to, you know, we've got the service now. Let's take advantage of it, see what we can do to help. We would like to see a new uh radio system for it, so we'd like to see a new microwave. We'd like to see, you know, some new uh vehicles, things like that, so. I don't know, I, I, I feel like if you can come up with some pretty rough uh front-loaded stuff for this person, she can be very successful.
Maybe because your S R O, did Michelle Perry get that one up in town?
She did.
And so this gal's got years and years of support she does with it. And so we just wanted to provide the opportunity and get anything we can for you guys in virtually every county department.
Yeah, this is certainly a step in the right direction. What we've seen over the past is we have people that want this or want that, but they don't wanna put any work into it. They want everybody else to do it. So now we have somebody that's available and put more.
They're designated for that purpose, and they, they have a very high success rate. So that's what we want to do. We wanna utilize this person, utilize that person.
We have the ability to make contact with her.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Flumber gave me the information. I have her contact number and everything that she's able to bring to us.
Yep.
See, because we, we want to be able to get as many grants for the sheriff's office, for the road department, for EMS, whatever county thing is going on. But if we figured it would cost us a hundred grand to employ somebody full-time. This way, we have a person that is working on a specific grant. She's not a full-time employee, so that saves the county money. But yet, if we pay her to go after something, she goes out, and so. She's already working on a couple for trails. She got one for the fairgrounds prior to us hiring her.
Yep.
She's done law work for Blenheim County.
She's county uses her extensively.
I wasn't aware of that, so.
No, that's fairly new development, but you know, we, we definitely wanna utilize the service as much as possible. See what options are out there. So on the OEM thing, that sounds like, you know, we're done there, was there, was there something in addition that you wanted to talk about?
Yes, I wanted to talk about uh increase in, in deputies.
Gotcha.
As soon as we're done with the OEM position.
Okay, unless there's other questions. Excuse me.
George, George.
A little bit COVID going here.
You know, the camera's running.
Since uh two thousand fifteen, when I was elected to the sheriff, I had been asking for increase in manpower. And I get it, you know what? You can't pull money out of the Easter egg and, and give us everything we want. But I, I think there, the time has come that we really need to take a, a hard look at this and, and make a determination as to. What, what's in the best interest of the citizens of Lake County. And I, I think uh that you guys will agree that uh law enforcement, fire, and road maintenance. Is the highest cost any county or any municipality will pay out of it, but it's those three things. Public safety is, it continues to go up and it will continue to up uh throughout time. I think we just have to come up with um different ways of seeking that money. And unfortunately, that falls on the board of commissioners, and they're trying to get those revenues and such. Over the last several years, we've seen um situations that require um more need for, for public safety. We had the, the flood that we talked about. We have a Braden Fire that drew our resources out of the, the town. We had uh the COVID um pandemic that happened, which took a deputy off the street for about five months. We've had uh three homicides, two officer-involved shootings in a four-month period. And we intend to see um deputies going down by the handfuls. At one point, I was nine deputies down. They had five out in the January first shooting. I had two at the academy and I had two injured. Currently, right now, I have five deputies out. I have one that's on administrative leave. I've got uh one that's on light duty because of a, a torn ACL. I got one out uh with an injured back, and that, we don't know whether that deputy will be back. Uh, one in the academy and one with a broken foot. These type of incidents are going to increase because of what we're seeing is a strain put on them due to they're tired. They're recovering because everybody's down, and so there's more overtime. We spent more overtime this year than we have, I would say, close to the last three years. Because we just, we have to staff the street. There's gotten to a point. There's gotten to a point that one day in particular, we could only respond on, on emergency basis. Everybody was down with the exception of myself. Now I'm getting old. But we had to respond on a call-out basis. So, um, as I stressed with the board of commissioners before any of you were here, that per capita, um, the national standard was at that time, two officers per thousand citizens. Today, it's two point four officers per thousand citizens, which specifically means we're five deputies short. If you look on the back page of the handout I get you, gave you, or the second page, I'm sorry, you'll see from, uh, two thousand eighteen, we just did a statistical graph. Our calls for service are increasing by thirteen hundred calls a, a year. From, uh, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, thirteen hundred calls. From two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, seventeen hundred calls. We don't, and we're already up to twenty-one seventy-three calls this year in, in the first quarter. So that is not gonna change. Statistically, crime rises, um, when you have influx of like the COVID pandemic and you have people, um, being laid off, you have psychological issues, you have, uh, domestic problems. You're, you're gonna have these type of crimes. If you turn page three, um, you'll see that domestic assaults have a, have, uh, the number that we took from twenty to current are a hundred and three. There's seventeen strangulations. And national statistics, statistics will tell you those who strangle late will shoot at cops. That's a given. And then the, the, the misdemeanor crimes aren't even, um, included in this. These are all violent crimes. Uh, burglary is considered a violent crime. When you go break into the house where it's occupied, that's a violent crime. And what the, the legislature started, uh, wanting to do now is that, uh, they wanna make a lot of, if somebody breaks into your house, you have an obligation to vacate. You can't protect your house and your family anymore. You have to vacate. Well, guess what? That's not gonna happen. And so we are going to be investigating more and more violent crimes. With the number of people that we have, the number of people that are down now, the stresses that we're seeing on, on people, the mental stresses, the physical stresses, that's going to increase also. Uh, legislator, legislation is talking about taking away qualified immunity from law enforcement. If that happens, I guess as you're gonna see, um, you, you won't have a law enforcement agency there because people will not stay and do the job that we're doing right now for the sake of being sued with no protection. I would, I would, I would guess that none of the commissioners would, would do that. I certainly wouldn't do it and I wouldn't expect my people to do that. So things are getting increasingly hard for law enforcement. And again, I think that what we're seeing right now, people that are injured and people that are down is, uh, mental and physical, um, stress. And they're tired, they're getting hurt easier. And we, we just need bodies. You can't do the job unless you have the resources. And so that's what we're asking for. We're asking for four deputies. Is that realistic or is that not realistic? That's why we're here, asking commissioners right now. That's a lot of money. And on the last page, it's, it's broke down per deputy, the equipment, the vehicle, the total cost for one, uh, one deputy. But the equipment and the, the vehicle is a one-time cost to start it up. And then, um, the vehicle would be cycled by some other commissioners. Uh, we're, we're asking for four. If it is within the budget and within, uh, the ability of commissioners to, to give us bodies, we would certainly appreciate that.
Pretty much hit it on the ball. Going, I would say is the, the level of calls that we're seeing. I, I've been, looked at sheriff's office here in Lake County for seventeen years. And in the last few years, I've never seen anything like it. But the level and the severity of the crimes that we're responding to and dealing with are something, um, out of its world. I mean, I think it's nationwide, but we're dealing with it here. And, um, in seventeen years, we had one officer involved shooting in all that time and we've had two in four months. Homicides are up. We had a, a five-month-old baby that was killed. We had a, turned out it was, it was pled down to a manslaughter case up north where an individual ran down his neighbor with his car and run him over and killed him. And then we had a blatant shooting, um, homicide here in the middle of Lake. Those all occurred last year. That's not normal for here. I mean, you were born and raised here, you were born and raised here. I don't know about you, but.
I was born and raised here and Lakeview I grew up in isn't the Lakeview we're living in today. And, uh, it, it's.
Well, I was born and raised in Lake County, not Lake.
Okay. But it's, it's, uh, it's a different flavor. We used to leave cars unlocked, houses unlocked. I, I will tell you this, in the last three months, we've had about twenty-five firearms stolen out of vehicles and residences around our community. And I have no reason to believe why these people are opening themselves up is to utilize against citizens or against us. These are people that can't go purchase firearms in a store, so they're getting them other ways.
And one of the, the big problems that we're seeing, and I don't know if there's any specifics on this, but I think we'd all agree is, is the violence and crime is increasing substantially because there is very little accountability. And that, and that creates a role. Pardon me, that plays a huge role. It does. And, and we're seeing it. We're seeing it. Every time there's a stolen firearm, there's potential for another officer involved shooting. In, like, under shit, like, under shit of almost daily, we've had murders and manslaughterers together. We've had seventeen, I'm sorry, we've had seven murders. How they're pled, that's beside the point. It's the taking of the life, it's a murder.
You're talking, these are charges, basically. What you have right here in front of us, we're talking about what they were charged with. We're not necessarily talking about what, what they were able to plead down.
Well, I would say the, the manslaughter and murders are what they were charged, charged with and what they were convicted of.
Gotcha.
Now, all the other crimes there are what they were arrested for, not necessarily convicted of. If that makes sense.
Right. And it'd be interesting to see those numbers and the differences between those to support the issue of accountability, I suppose.
And, you know, uh, again, you know, we'll, we'll arrest violent criminals and they laugh at us. Nothing's gonna happen to them, you know, for the most part.
Sheriff, uh, commissioners, we've, uh, been promoting to get a nuisance officer. Could you help state so that people could better understand what role, if any, a nuisance officer would play in your department? So they would not be, uh, have additional skills or, or whatnot that would, uh, support as backup for, for your department?
Well, this is where we are on, um, the nuisance officer. And we've looked at it, but we are so busy dealing with person crimes and property crimes that, and when you talk about a nuisance officer, I'm assuming you're talking about, um, dog nuisance, animal nuisance, property nuisance as, uh, violence and, and so on and so forth. We tried to do that. We just, we just couldn't do it because there's just too many calls for service. Now, if we reduced our way of policing, and that, that would be not providing a, a full-time service to the citizens, for example, cutting services. And, and we have created, we have not implemented yet. It's a citizens portal where we have minor crimes, such as a theft, where there's no suspect information, there's no witnesses, and there's no physical evidence that the victim can get on the portal and fill out their own report. Now, if there's information that comes in a later date that reveals there's a suspect, there's a witness, or there is physical evidence, we can assign it to that people. But for the most part, it would be for insurance purposes only. We provide a full-time service to the citizens. You call, we call. And I think that that's something that we owe the citizens of Lake County. If they need law enforcement, we should respond to it. Now, if we cut services, for example, not go into anything other than person crimes, I wouldn't feel good about doing nuisance, uh, if we're not servicing the citizens of, of, of Lake County. I don't know if I'm making any sense, uh, but I think that our priority is to provide the service that the citizens need. And I'm not saying that nuisance isn't a service that they need, but it's low on the priority as far as policing is concerned. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, the only, the only other thing I would add is, um, we've been a little bit frustrated over the years is some of the, so if we, if we back up, um, there used to be compliance letters that were sent out by, um, the planning and building office. And every year, we would get the same complaints on the same individuals that were going out. And that process would start all over again. And so the individual get a letter, so if you can't have a feedlot in the middle of town, and you have thirty days to comply. And so at the end of that thirty days, the second letter goes out and says, you must comply or else. Well, what we were finding is every single year that was occurring, but by the time we would get to a level where there was gonna be some enforcement action taken, it was the end of the season, animals removed, and the problem was taken care of. And then the next year, at the same exact time, this would occur again and we would just continue down that road. No different than, you have the same rancher, but the same year, he waters the county roads. And he does it year after year after year after year. And prior to enforcement action, he'll put up a piece of metal that keeps the water from going on the road. But it's frustrating that we should be able to start what we left off last year. And we're already past the warning phase, we're already past the or else phase, and now we're the penalty phase. And the way that the ordinances were written and that the age of the ordinances, I think that they need to be updated and rewritten and have some teeth in them to hold people accountable. And, um, I think that, you know, Carl Schumacher up north, he brought forth a bunch of information here several years back on the, um, people living in dwellings that didn't meet the ordinance. They didn't have power, they didn't have water, they didn't have a meter. People were buying properties and sticking a fifty-year-old camp trailer on it and that's their residence. And, um, it was driving property values down, it was driving complaints up. And, you know, we're seeing it right here in Lakeview. I mean, you can, you guys can go drive around the south end of town and you can see properties down there with eight, nine motor homes, camp trailers that people are living in. There's no plumbing, there's no running water, there's no tower, or they're stealing power from the neighbor. But there's no penalty for that, other than we're gonna send a letter. And I, I don't know the answer to it, but I can tell you that some of the problems we're addressing in this on page three are the same people that's living in these, these camp trailers and RVs.
Commissioner, I, I simply put it like this. You have a deputy and you have two things going on at one time. You have a chihuahua walking down the sidewalk that's not bothering anybody, but yet you get a call on that dog every day. Or there's a domestic going on here. What would the citizens choose for that officer to respond to? Obviously, the domestic. And, and that's the way we feel. Person crimes are, are the highest priority. That may never get looked at. Now, if it's a case of animal abuse, we try to handle those the best we can. Or a cluttery yard or something like that, um, we, we just don't do that with my own time. And the thing that I proposed when we were looking at the nuisance officer was this, and I don't think it had been fully thought out, is you, with nuisance, you're gonna impound people's property. There's gonna be a fine. There's gotta be a means of impounding that property. There's gotta be a storage area. There's got to be a means of appeal. And then the disposition of, of the property. Who's gonna take care of that property once the appeal process is over? And say they're, um, they're found to be in violation of the county ordinance or something. All these things have to be in effect and that's gonna, that's a huge process. Rather than just, we, we could go just cite them, this is an alternative. But who's gonna hear that? The judge would have to hear that because what we've found in the past, not with this board of commissioners, but when you have an entity come before the board of commissioners and appeal their case. Now, elected officials are, they try to appease the, and if you are as elected official, finding somebody guilty, guess what? We're losing votes. I mean, the reality is, and, and I would say that the commissioners should never hear anything like that.
So the way, the way we're setting it up now is they'll get a letter. If they've had a letter already, they'll get a citation. Citation goes to the court. The court fines them or finds them innocent. If they don't pay their fine, I mean, they'll be turned over to collections. If they don't pay collections, they'll be placed on their property. If they don't pay, they will lean, and then a certain amount of time, the county will repossess the property.
Such as an eviction?
Correct.
Such as an eviction?
So how does that work?
I don't think, I might, I'm not completely familiar with it. I think it's just a lien on a property and then if a transaction occurs, then, you know, will eventually get, like, by a police, if they're criminal.
But we can keep fining them and then the court, the court said that they would do that, so.
And that would be.
So it never come before the commissioners.
And that would be a violation, correct? It would be criminal, it'd be a violation. And then in the event that the people refuse to vacate the property, would that be part of the process? At some point, they have to vacate?
Well, if they're a tenant, maybe the landlord, once they get this lien on their property, might want to vacate them. But if the county isn't going to start, they're vacating.
Yeah, okay.
So where would law enforcement come in in this process?
I can, I don't know.
I, I, I think if law enforcement were to be involved, once we had an ordinance officer of sorts, it would be mainly to make sure that everyone was safe and to look for that support, I suppose. Because like you pointed out, Paul, some of the people that we'd be dealing with are some of the people that are on this list in front of us. And I think that, uh, you know, any ordinance officer, we've had issues in the past, the previous nuisance officer was threatened and had, had similar issues like that. So I think that we would want to make sure that whoever that person was, was at least in partnership or working well enough with you guys to be able to, you know, say, hey, I'm going to this person's house. I'm gonna be making contact with this person. Do you guys know who this guy is? And you can say, oh, yeah, we know, we know this. Okay, so what, what have you? And, um, and that way you guys are aware. So if a call comes out or whatever, and someone starts yelling for help, um, you guys know where to go. I think the idea was to just make sure that we were, that the right hand was talking to the left hand in our attempt to build disposition.
Well, I think that if there was a, a problem house, we would, we would just go out there with them, make sure nobody was.
And that's kinda, yeah.
As far as your deputies, there's no doubt that you need more help. The problem for us is finding the money to help you. And that's the goal. I don't, I don't doubt the need at all. I don't doubt the need at all. It's just where we can get the money.
And we'll look.
Yeah, we'll...
But you know, we're talking, we're leaning now.
We're talking nuisance or ordinance person. And we're talking up to four deputies, you know, so there's six people now that we currently don't have on staff.
Then we're gonna figure it out. And then if there's other positions too, we heard that there may be other positions as well.
You know, that's what we're down, is what positions. I realize that money is the issue, but I, what I'm saying is, we're down four. I would take one, I would take two, I would even take three. But we're in desperate need, and things aren't gonna change. As you see, the calls for service are continually going up. And for the last six years, or even before that... Now, I'm not talking about us, our contractual agreement with the town, but I'm just talking county. The calls for service have continued to go up, our increase in deputies has not gone up once. In fifteen years, fifteen years, so we're slowly, slowly falling behind. And the only fix to that is start to cut services. And I don't wanna cut services because I'm a firm believer that when a citizen calls law enforcement, an officer should respond and address that need. But if we don't have the bodies to do it, we just can't do it.
How many deputies do you currently have?
No, we're not talking the contractual. We have... Well, we got two up north, and I'm not talking about a sergeant. I look at that as an administrative position, but he does handle calls. So, I've got, we've got three, and then we got a tag, magazine. We have seven road deputies.
Counting two?
Yes. Actually, we have additional deputy up north, but that is a town position. And I just reassigned one of my deputies down here to the town. We did that.
So, everybody...
No, we have seven, so, yeah. But I know you know there's four deputies out there, and when I tell you there's three county physicians up there. There's one town physician up there, and then I guess we assign...
Oh, then, you've got, how many people are out with injuries?
I've got, right now, I've five now. And let's see, I've got one, two that we're not gonna see replacements for possibly six months. I'll have another body back at the beginning of May, because that body's in the academy. And then that's up north, isn't it? Yeah. And then that one is unnormally this time, right?
That deputy will have to ride with somebody else for six weeks.
About a month, depending on how they do it. The ones that we've been getting out of the academy, the fortunate thing that we've had is we hire them, they go out and they work the street, because the academy, there's no spots in them, so they might get a month, two, maybe three months on the street. So, they're quite familiar with the street, so it takes less time to acclimate them into the field by themselves than what if they were just brought new ones?
So, you gave a statistic, the goal should be two point four officers per thousand people. Is that the goal, or is that...
No, that's the national standard, national standard. Right now, with seven road deputies, we have one person per eleven hundred people.
And if you include the sheriff and myself as primary responders, we get that number up to about one point... One point four, one point six is where we're sitting at. But it makes it difficult to do hard jobs when we're doing that job as well, so... I mean, we do what we gotta do, and that is what it is, but that's inclusive of administration, not just what the... And we did have some grant funding that the sheriff's office has relinquished back to the state. We had some speed enforcement grants, we had seatbelt grants, we had DUI grants. And what we learned is they're overtime grants. They have to be above and beyond your shift, a separate shift that's tracked, monitored, billed, and then recovered. And what we're finding is that people are working enough that they don't wanna, they don't wanna volunteer for overtime shift to do those. I mean, we still provide those services when we're doing them, but we're doing them in the normal course of our duties as opposed to in addition to. So, we still have the Oregon Rainboard map money that we're providing that service, but that's a small grant, and it's hours worked, hours billed, hours recovered. And so... I think it's eight. But if we're not working those hours, we don't get to recover any of them, so... And again, it's not conducive to adding anything to it. It's adding additional duties to us that we can get reimbursed somewhat for, but...
Any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
If you guys got ideas too, on where we can finance that, we're more than happy to take a look.
Your checkbook?
You know, we do have some grants that pay for part-time of some of our deputies. But what we find with grant money is we have mandates that we have to fulfill, and it's not doing us any good, because we're required to have a deputy out on the sand dunes. They're not working the streets. And sometimes you gotta pull them off the sand dunes to cover a call or something like that. But if they're mandated to be out there in the sand dunes with this grant, it's just another headache that you have to manage to find...
On the grant part though, if we could focus on equipment and radios and get all that where it's paid for by grants, that would free up money for us to go to an officer.
It would, except for as it stands, we only put sixteen thousand dollars worth of radio maintenance and equipment each year. So, that's all that currently that we're allocating over that direction that we'd be able to add back. But that'd be a start.
That might be some cash for any of yours.
One thing I would like you to take a look at is that because we are so good, or I should say under shared policies, so good at being fiscally responsible, we have, and this is just my terminology, we get X number of dollars in our budget. At the end of the year, we return, and when I say we don't return, we don't use X number of dollars. Over the last five years, it's been ninety thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, up to a hundred and eighty thousand. And so, my thought process was, okay, we're not using this money. We're being fiscally responsible, we could budget another deputy. I mean, it would be thin, but we would budget another deputy within our own budget. But then there was, there was talk that, well, you guys, we're giving you too much money because you're not spending it. No, that's not the case. We're trying to be fiscally responsible so we can get what we need, the resources that we need, so it'd be easier for these guys to do their job.
Well, and you don't wanna be penalized for being fiscally responsible.
And that's what it seemed happened. Well, you are returning so much money, you don't need that much money. Yes, we do. We could spend it on stuff, but we are not just gonna arbitrarily go out there and spend the money on things we don't need just because it's there. And so, that came up. We can finance one more deputy within our own budget. That never happened. So, if you just take a look at that too, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Sheriff, make sure you give all that information...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, guys.
And I will send you guys that email.
Other deals?
Perfect.
Thank you. So, our next item, we're gonna be, we have eleven o'clock for draft declaration session. Can you guys find one for a five-minute break real quick?
One minute break?
Yeah, just a one-minute break? Yeah, just a real quick five-minute break would be a really good idea, if you don't mind, Brian? All right, thank you.
You seen Brian come in as a wrong leader?
Yeah.
So, he does share bad news.
How you doing, buddy?
I'm not too bad. Regulating water. Not looking good. And so, Plummer County declared last week... You want to do the record?
Sure. I'm probably helping with my decoration.
Yeah, that's fresh off the pretzels, Lori.
Thank you.
All better. Yeah, it was two hours, it's... Yeah, a lot.
Nice.
Brian!
I go with it.
It's dry.
Yep. Had somebody knocking on my door. Please don't worry. Wanted me to come and regulate water.
Oh, really?
No, I am serious. I was in my pajamas still.
Knocking on your home door?
Yep. Not first time. Probably the last.
You need to stop telling before you do.
Everybody figures it out eventually.
It's a small community.
Well, this individual has always been a trouble child.
Oh, is that, did we turn the camera off? Yeah, we'll wait.
So, I gave you guys a sheet, but this morning, the river is starting to store its stream flow.
Yeah. Is the camera still going?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. I was talking to him.
Yeah.
I could probably figure it out.
Take it over.
Yeah, there you go. Um, all right, so we'll come back into session. It's about eight minutes past eleven. So, Ryan, our water master, can you give us a presentation? Or at least kinda give us a quick update on where things are at right now, water levels? And we're on to the discussion right now on our agenda for draft declaration discussion, so...
Well, I gave you a sheet of paper with the current snow tell numbers. Even though they say we're at seventy percent of average, based on why those numbers are skewed, you can see by Cedar Pass and Dismal Swamp. Everything else isn't looking that good. The Sheehawak system, we use two sites there, Crazy Man Flats, because of proximity, even though it's on the backside of the drainage basin and the summer rain. They're running at forty-five percent, and it's thirty-six percent on the other side. So, the Sheehawak end is looking pretty crap, and it's gonna be a short season for those guys, as well as a lot of the other stuff. I'm currently regulating on, well, a bird creek, buck creek, cricket creek. And Linky Water user sent me a letter requesting that I release storage from both drunes. From Dog Lake. Dog Lake's one of them, but last time I was up there, Dog Lake didn't even have water, it was spillway.
It was up there Sunday, and it didn't have water, it was spillway.
So, yeah, you get to any of it.
I thought that water had a stay-in to a certain time anyway.
It does. I'd have to look at their stipulated agreement. I think it's main water.
There's zero water, so...
Yeah, there's nothing, yeah.
So...
There is runoff, though.
Yeah, of course, you see that down below.
Pretty decent.
So, current storage levels, Thompson Reservoir is twelve forty, that's five point nine percent of their capacity. Drew's Reservoir is at fifteen percent, fifteen point nine, with ten thousand. Talking with one of the district people, they think they're gonna be, maybe be able to deliver one acre foot this year. So, that's not very good. They normally deliver three. So, and then Cottonwood Reservoir is at thirteen percent of capacity, at twelve hundred and ten acre feet of water. So, on the current stream flows, if you take a twenty mile creek at the front of the level, it should be probably running in the sixty to a hundred range right now. And it may too with the weather coming up. You know, looking at the snowpack on, you know, Dismal Swamp and Cedar Pass, the deep creek system will probably fare better than anything else out here, for sure. So, what's the average for deep creek this time of year? I've measured five thousand high, and I mean, it really varies. I love it, depends on how much low elevation snowpack we have. It's still a little early for everything to be, you know, for that height cap, you know, the height of the deep snow. That usually starts, so towards the end of the month and the first part of May. And then it usually runs fairly well into June, and then we're out. So, Honey Creek is extremely low. I'm gonna be getting a call to institute their use agreement over there. So Honey Creek is extremely low, um, I'm guessing I'll be getting a call to institute their, um, use agreement over there. So, it really gets shut off and it gets split between four ranges on a rotation basis. Um, Sheehawke Canyon's been better, I thought it would, it hooked up to one fifty today, you know, and it's, it's, I don't know how long it's gonna hold. Um, Silver Creek has run at five, but, uh, Thompson's shut in on it, so there's no water coming, only water coming down to be off the west port. That's coming down to the gauge.
I noticed that Tom, that Sheehawke Canyon was a little high, but what, what was it before, it was holding in sixty?
Yeah, well, I measured it, um.
It was well under a hundred.
Yeah, I measured it the last week, the last week of March, I measured it, it was running sixty. So Buck Creek, uh, is at five CFS, but we're currently, like I said, we're currently regulating on Buck Creek. And then Cottonwood Creek, the inflow into the reservoirs at sixteen, which is low. You know, typically this time of year, we'll, we'll see, you know, when you're comparing five to fifty CFS, it's low.
So Brian, uh, appreciate all these statistics, um, I guess, uh, it's pretty obvious that we're in a drought, that we're headed for a really tough summer. I don't think there's any of us that would, uh, dispute that. Uh, you know, the hope is that we have suddenly, uh, the spring rain that comes on and at least, uh, gets that first grass crop up and, uh, gives us something.
Yep.
Is there anything historical, uh, where we're at historically that you can think of?
Well, I, I've heard, uh, from, uh, some of the old district managers, old, uh, George Covian, um, said that there was a couple years there that just all of a sudden, through April, it just started raining, and pretty much saved the day, and, so there is, you know, that has happened. I don't know that I would count on it.
I do remember in nineteen ninety-two, uh, water was below the boat ramp at Drew's. Cause I backed the fire engine off of it to get water to go on fire, and of course then I couldn't pull out, cause I sunk, but.
Nice job.
Yeah, that was a nice job. Uh, so, we were this low in ninety-two.
Yeah, well, that was a bad year.
That was a bad year.
Yeah.
I would think that this were incomparable.
Yeah, and one thing I wanna point out too, like on Drew's Reservoir, you know, it's got ten thousand acre feet in there, but, you know, I, I don't know if I've told you this, but we went into the season period over right around seven thousand, so we only gave three thousand acre feet.
It's been very slow, though.
Yeah.
So we're losing a lot in time.
That's typically what happens when things come off slow, you know, the, the ground sucks up the moisture and the, the streams, so the best thing that could happen is when you're running on snow, it push it down, it'll make it down to where the reservoirs are moving.
So would you guys like me to prepare a doubt drought declaration?
I would, please. Yeah.
Can I email that to you?
No, but I've done it before, and I'll send it to you, and with my facts and figures and.
No, I've got a new template that they just put out this year, I'll, I'll email it to you.
Oh, thanks, that's great.
So our neighboring counties have already declared droughts, other counties.
Well, more likely, it was a federal birth declaration, and then we were automatically included in since we're neighboring county on the federal birth declaration. Um, I don't know whether one county's done it yet, um, the shoots, I don't know that well, because they have, they're a snow pack. And so there's stuff, and I know Plymouth has one, but Plymouth declares early every year.
Yeah, part of the, uh, do you mind describing what the advantages of declaring early?
Well, I would, it has to do with federal subsidy money they get from, from the potato growers.
And it has to do with months of drought, when you, in their condition?
Yeah. So, and I don't know anything about the subsidies that, that are available to, you know, our, our boroughs or areas. That usually comes through on the federal level.
So I know that the guys that are like calling water, but basically not in the country, before they could start receiving funding in March, on March first, but, uh, they changed the rule to May first, and so.
Yeah, this is about due time, right, with our current conditions.
Yeah.
So maybe they can start receiving some money after then. I'm gonna be a credit for at least having most able drought status. Drought declaration status.
Any questions?
Um, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's, it's been a busy season already, and I feel sorry for everyone.
So Brian, on our drought monitors that we got.
Yeah.
So January one, it shows mostly counties in a severe drought, but then the April one says that we're adverbially dry to severe drought.
Hot?
Is that twenty twenty?
It is.
Why do I have twenty twenty?
I think he's just showing you a comparable, Justin sent those over.
Oh, pardon me.
I checked the drought monitor the other day, well, I guess yesterday, and it's already read again.
Yep.
But you can download that report, it goes, the last available drought, like, report to everyone is.
Yeah, I, I actually emailed you guys the latest drought report.
Yeah, I saw that coming.
Sorry.
Well, I looked at that too, and it doesn't make sense, then I realized the years.
But from January to March, a lot of our extreme drought has went to severe, which is, I don't see how.
I don't know how they come up with those numbers.
Thank you for the severe that works.
You know, I gave up trying to predict the weather in Lake County a long time ago, so.
I think the Weather Service did too.
But it's, yeah, I, I think there's, I, I, I think it comes in waves. I mean, uh, you get these heatwaves and everything else, and cold spells, I mean, like right now, there's, there were weeks in January, it was hot.
Oh, yeah.
Yesterday it was cold.
It was, it was cold yesterday.
But, so, and there has been a little bit of moisture up in the mountains. Um, I've gone to sit over, at least on Gwinnett Rim, there's still snow up in the hills and everything, which is looking good, except for that water shift, but, um, for the most part, it is very concerning, because the water.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it'll be busy.
Yeah.
You know, I've already gotten two calls on, on people's wells that they're worried about, and I'm about to take water levels for them this week.
Yeah.
When you, when you, when you shut off?
When you legally shut off?
Yeah, I, I caught him before they irrigated, he was putting in his perifer system with, uh, like a twenty acre pasture, and he was on water lines.
Oh, I know.
I caught him before he made the mistake.
All the perfect, thank you. He's right there. Yeah.
So, any other questions, guys? I got, I got a researcher sitting in.
Sounds good, no, that's it, Brian, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your mail.
Glad you can do a rain dance.
What's that?
Glad you can do a rain dance.
I do do the rain dance.
And it's quite, it's quite the scene.
We, we were almost doing it earlier, that's why we had to leave, get rid of this. Alright, um, next item on our list is ASA variance support request. We'll, um, we'll continue the drought, we'll just do the drought declaration tomorrow. Sound good?
So I'll get ready, and then you guys go over to tomorrow.
Yeah, is that be alright?
Sure, whatever you want.
I just wanna make sure. There's nothing. You're breaking?
No.
Um, so ASA variance is, uh, next up. And Melanie, you said you broke this out, um, to two different letters.
Yeah, I have two different ones for myself, I didn't think it would make sense to reprint them from you guys.
No, no, that's perfectly fine, yeah. It's just extra paper, um, but the language is the same, so, um, you guys are alright with that? What supports, uh, Silver Lake, what supports North Lake County? Either one supports, another one supports, what they consider. Uh, that, that one is the one that, uh, is the old one, and we, we found that it needs to be broke out. So, um, that one, you see in front of you with the letterhead, basically that would be broke out. Um, I believe the one Troy, what is that?
That's this one?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the old one. Those are old, I believe, aren't they?
That's what suing was leading to.
Okay.
So they have, they have a letter from the provider supporting the variance for each EMS district, and then they will have a, a letter, each have a letter from us supporting variance.
Okay. And basically, we're, we're just gonna take those. One for Gary, one for you. Same. Um, guys have any questions? Or if you don't have any questions, we'll just move forward, act on that tomorrow.
No questions for me?
Okay. Um, mental health, uh, vital laws amendment?
I have some issues.
Okay.
I don't have any.
That's why I asked you about.
Um, so with my allergies, I've been struggling a little bit, but six and four seem the same to me.
Alright, um, is that under membership, or?
Yes, under membership on page one.
Gotcha.
So, um, I have that. Um, they said on page two, additions in removal of members, the director may remove a member of the board. I understand that, but does that mean that they can include the commissioner? Does she have that authority to remove a commissioner?
No.
A commissioner?
No, because we're, well, we're, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, no.
You, you, you're right, I, I understand where you're going with it, and, and we can clarify that, but, uh, in my opinion, I don't believe that that would be appropriate because we're ex parte anyway. So, uh, but, we could, we, we can consider some additional language right in there right now.
Which number is that?
Um, on page two, number two.
Additions and removals of members, number two, mid, middle of the page.
And I do think the commissioner should be removed if there's some sort of, like, blatant issue like that.
Right, but that, that should be up to the board to make that determination and disimprove it.
I don't think that might be the case at all, because the board should make that decision, the directorship.
Well, I'm, I'm actually, I, I went to the ORS earlier, so I'm gonna pull it up, but now I'm looking at the actual language.
So you had something else?
No, just those two things. I forgot that thing else in the spine, I just had those two questions.
You know, we request, uh, our place to act in a manner as professional. We can, you know, we we can come down hard on anybody that is, that is, uh, using misconduct in capacity or neglect of duty. If we see that, certainly a commissioner would not do that either. But I'd be curious what the ORS states in there.
So the ORS actually is pertaining to the Director of Organ Health Authority, with the approval of the Governor, Sheldon one fifteen, but not more than twenty members of the Mental Health Advisory Board.
This is about an advisory board, right?
This is the Mental Health Advisory Board, but this is not, they're not appointed by the Director of Organ Health Authority. I think this is talking about the Organ Health Authority Advisory Board on Mental Health.
Make sure you got four three zero point zero five zero.
Correct.
Good.
That's it. And, um, yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it's Mental Health Advisory Board, that's what it's under. And at the very bottom of it, it does say the Director may remove any member of the board for misconduct in capacity or neglect of duty. But I, again, that is directly from the ORS. However, I do believe, I don't believe that this is necessarily for an advisory board of the county commissioners, I, I believe this is an advisory board of the Organ Health Authority on Mental Health. Um, and which would make sense, the Director of Organ Health Authority, which answers for the Governor, would have that ability to do that, because the Governor is not going to necessarily be handling them.
Yeah, I guess I took that wrong, I think that was directed at us.
Oh.
Well, I think it should be.
You mean the Director being able to remove a member from the boards, or?
Yeah, with your guys' consensus, I would add that, like, I think if there's an issue, the Director should come to you guys, let you know, and then the minister will remove, just like we would with any. But I didn't want, I wanted to protect you guys, like, what if the Director
We could.
is new and has a personal beef with you and just says you're, there's some sort of misconduct, maybe there needs to be more conversation with you guys before, if anyone had it or.
Right, so how about, how about this, man, just, just a suggestion, the Lake County Board of Commissioners reserve the right to, um, dismiss or remove any board member for misconduct or in capacity or neglect of duty or at, or, at the discretion, or, or at the recommendation of the Director. Would that work?
Sure.
That way we reserve that right to make that decision, but it's the full Board of the Lake County Commissioners that would make that decision.
And it's not, uh, but she, and it's still allowing for the Mental Health Director there.
Correct, so it's or.
Make the recommendation.
Yeah, that the rec, the Director makes the recommendation to us.
You can put it together.
Put lots in her language, so it's, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, again, this is the, that's just taken, so we have to ORS, but that is not for our advisory board, that is for the Organ Health Authority Advisory Board, uh, or Mental Health Advisory Board to.
Yeah, because whoever the Director is, if they had a beef with somebody, including the Commissioner, they could remove them.
Uh, under that language, you could, you could make that case, but again, the, the, uh, maybe, maybe I should ask Trace if she has an issue with me.
Probably.
It's possible. I doubt it. I hear her, oh, what, what caused us to write this? No, I'm just kidding, um. It, it, it is a possibility. I'll just, I, I would just say, like, the Lake County Board of Commissioners reserve the right to, um, dismiss or to, or to, to remove any board member, uh, of the advisory board for misconduct in capacity or neglect of duty, so we can take proportion of it from that language. Um, or, comma, or at the recommendation of the Director.
Shouldn't we, at the recommendation, because I think she should.
Or at the recommendation. Yeah.
Can I see?
I think she should.
Pardon me?
I think she should be at the recommendation, just like with any other committee, like by administrative committee, if, like, hey, I wanna add this person, or delete this person.
It's not to be at the recommendation, because we're the Mental Health Authority.
We don't, we don't give that authority up. So, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, but again, I think it was just a copy.
And you have a Director saying. And you have a director saying who they want and who they can get rid of on their advisory board.
Right, and see, the thing is, this is an advisory board to us, so.
Or we re- re- that completely.
Well, I I don't, I don't know if it hurts having, having a little bit of something in there saying that we have the right to remove. Uh an advisory board member for misconduct, because it's not necessarily, we're we're ex parte. There's multiple other members on that advisory board. Now, someone were to. Do something that we didn't like or whatever, or was to, started causing a lot of problems that were counterproductive. Like it's good to have that leverage in there, not that we don't have it regardless.
You got up to fifteen people on the board. An advisory board, that's quite few.
I guess they would need the. Really to. We don't have fifteen now, we have, what do we have, uh nine, eight, in all health advisory board?
I don't know if they're recommending fifteen.
Including the ex parte. Yeah, but we don't have that. That the state's recommending all kinds of things, but you know, it doesn't really. Doesn't really pencil out.
Okay, on uh page three, number two, the highlighted piece in all areas of Lake County. You would think that this. Uh board is representing all of Lake County. So I guess it's been added in there as a emphasis item.
Yeah. Yeah, uh I think, I think it's, our advisory board has been in the past mostly people from the Lakeview area. Um part of that to in 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 defense of the advisory board is because it's difficult to get interest. On the uh in the other areas of the county. But it is, it it is something that we recognize as uh. An issue of accountability.
I guess I'm just asking. I, you know, I've never been to a meeting, but uh in the future, I hope that. That statement isn't necessary, because they are representing all of us.
I wonder why that one specifically is highlighted and red.
The rendition. So where are we gonna go with this, uh are they gonna, are we asking them to revise uh?
They revise that and send them to me. So I, if you guys, I can change this and res- and then I'll say these are approved. Changes and submit them to them and see if they have any issues um.
Why is it P two B sent, do they have to approve it or?
They administer this board and then you guys are the authority. So they're responsible for scheduling meetings, um the roster, um. Bylaws, so they're, they have these recommended changes to the bylaws. Some of the changes approved, I think late last year were being the commissioner and CEO ex parte. Members, um and so then they got some other recommendations that they're now kind of working on.
The commissioner's always been ex parte though.
Has it, well then the.
I I believe so, and and we just made the determination that the CEO would spend again as well, he would also be ex parte. And so. Yeah, it was a while ago, but yeah. But you know, and it does, you know, we we do, on the very first line, we say the county commissioners serve, uh the county commissioners serving on the board. Shall be at the pleasure of the of the board of county commissioners. So, you know, I mean, if they wanted to remove a commissioner from the board. Um for whatever reason, you know, a director, even if she did have that authority, it's. Item one says it's at the pleasure of the. The board, the whole board, so. So whatever we determine. We want to sentence to that.
I mean, I just don't like one person having the power over the whole board, given this.
Oh no, I completely understand, that's why I recommended my, you know, the adjustment in the language would be that we as a full board reserve that right. Will always follow, you know, listen to the recommendations coming from the director, but. And I think that's the appropriate change. Command. So did you, were you able to capture that, Melanie? Did I write it down? I hope you guys are good with that. Oh, I did have a question, on the four-year term, what is it now?
I don't know, I don't remember.
Okay.
I don't know if it's two years or. I'd be honest, I think.
Well, I I thought for sure that it was like a, I thought it was a four-year term. Maybe, maybe it is only two. I I'm just, I'm just questioning what they're changing there at number two. And the Mental Health Authority may choose to replace a member after a four-year term with a new qualified.
I think they're just getting that ORS code, getting more of the stuff, definitely.
That that could be, they're just taking them like. But again, I I don't feel like the ORS under um the paragraph that we just talked about. I don't think that's pertaining to us, I think that is to the Oregon Health Authority, uh the Oregon, yeah, the uh at the state level.
Well, I think that's why we're gonna strike that.
Yeah. Okay, no other questions? Why do you do that? Moving on. We've got twentieth amendment to OHA agreement.
So, what is this, this is. It's a COVID response.
It's an increase of thirty-four thousand seventy-three dollars for preparations for COVID response.
Yep.
COVID response. I spoke to Judy a little bit this morning, sorry. And it's an increase, not an increase.
Correct.
So it's more of a came.
Yeah.
For COVID response immunization stuff and. Does she, is this time sensitive, she need this sort of way or?
No, uh OHA sends these to me. Um I think they know there's kind of a process.
Yeah.
You do hundreds. Hundreds.
And so the next one is similar, it's an increase in funding. There's an increase of three hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for contact tracing. And an increase of eighty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars for the Oregon Humanization Program.
I spoke to Judy this morning and she said that they would take whatever they could get, and if they don't use it, they will send it back, not a problem. So and the user again, um. Both increases. The full increases.
That's pretty well.
Yeah, it's nearly half a million dollars. Good. A large portion of that is for active monitoring. I don't know, maybe they'll be able to hire an additional person if there's a need um in the future, not knowing what's going to look like. Use it. So next one up, the First Amendment, COVID day agreement. Okay, this is.
So, this is a prevention grant for Francine Myers.
Got it.
She is uh planning with the help of UPM to put on a youth leadership conference or summit, or however you wanna say it. At Camp Cotton this summer for about a week. And so this has, it's for twenty-five thousand here, forty-nine dollars, and then there is a small match. So they're actually getting about twenty-three thousand dollars of this money.
Wait, so that their match is on top, it is is inclusive? In included in this, or is it on top of the twenty-five thousand?
Well, I. It's included, the total amount of the award is the, and a lot of that will be in kind, I believe.
Okay, alright.
I fully support this uh copy, I just have trouble putting my eyes on the money. Where's it at?
It's like.
Um it's.
This is exhibit C or?
Yeah, exhibit C, I'm getting the, the full, the full amount is twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Three hundred and forty-nine, um and they split that out into two different years there, so you see the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one total. And then the twenty-one, twenty-two total. So did they use it in twenty-twenty?
No, she wants to use it. Um she submitted it then, so I don't know. It was confusing, she asked me where the contract was, and I said, I don't know. I said, I have this new agreement, is this what you're looking for, and she looked at it and she said, no. But then I talked to OHA and they were like, yeah, she's just confused and some of the um financials might be confusing, I said, yeah. But anyways, this is for the summit and for her program.
Yeah. And that's another month or something, I think, or something?
It's in July.
It is, that's right.
So what's our commitment from our budget evening?
No.
It's entirely on her, so, but we, they saw it all pass through us, so. But yeah, she sent out that email saying that it was held up on the county end, and I was completely lost as to what we were even talking about. Isn't sure, so it's good. Um next item, second page of your agenda. Uh Climate Lake Forest Health Partnership. There's uh.
They might wanna postpone this.
Yeah, that's right, because they just come and join us at one. So we'll post, we'll postpone on that, but real quick, um you guys have a map on yours?
That's for the CFL RP, I believe.
Okay, because I have like.
Which Amy is coming to.
Yeah, they're doing a whole presentation afterwards.
The votes. Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, because I have a bunch of.
That's today?
Yeah, it's up to me.
The maps all look the same.
I sent you uh, I believe, the document, yeah.
Yeah, I have four copies of the same map, so I was wondering if maybe.
That's just how it printed, and they didn't know, there was something in the print that they wouldn't wanna talk to you guys about.
Okay. Yeah, no, no. It's, it's fine, I I just didn't wanna, I wanna make sure you guys have.
You're like, gee, gee.
Alright, got it.
You got it.
Alright, so next item, uh Melanie, uh OBA Wolf Compensation and Financial Assistance.
Yeah, so the Wolf Deprivation Committee um suggested or recommended that we apply for a thousand dollars for education or prevention funding. Depending on the need, um this is mostly a placeholder, um we applied for this before the uptick in wolf activity. Um so likely we might need another meeting for um a compensation review. Or we'll have more need for programming funding, but you know, it doesn't hurt to get a thousand bucks. To get the good word out.
So.
We haven't had any depredations in six years, five years.
I realize we might have gave some of it to Marin County.
Two years ago.
But. You guys have brought up to, brought to our attention about being able to take these carcasses to the landfill. And there's gonna be a cost for that. And so I wonder if we can include getting rid of the carcasses. As part of that.
Submars? Yeah, so if that was approved.
Cause it's gonna, so what I did was when I was on the, my economic development call, um. I asked Greg Sedgland from the EQ about giving some of this information. And whether to take the dump, uh carcasses, tallow or whatever it is into our landfill. So he was gonna look at into that, it might cost us, we might have to put a small liner and also build in there is animals. ODAD is leaving their animals in different outfits around the county, you know, the road kills. And if we could use some money from this. Um and classify it as. Yeah.
That would be an acceptable allowance, and then in the future, the way the grant falls, we had to apply for this before even these talks happened. So next year, if we have more information, we can apply to meet that requirement in February.
So we're out of, we're out of it for this year, this is what we're gonna get.
Yeah. So we have until um.
We need to plan on that to make sure that.
If we get the information and figure out it's usable.
I believe this thousand dollars was all we could apply.
We could have applied for a lot, but we didn't have a need at the initial meeting when the, like, way the grant fell. And then after that, we had this uptick and we're like, well, what about carcass removal at the landfill? And so that fell after the grant was due, so. We can, we can apply.
Are they just thinking ahead?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we need to start thinking not very good strategies.
Yeah, and I think, I think it would fund that.
I think, I think a bigger issue develops this then, well, when you go to make a special pit in your lining. Are you also potentially setting up for a business to come in to have a butcher shop?
Yeah.
But that's exactly what I brought up to Greg, the EQ was, you know, you know, because why would we build this for purposes that people bear may not bring? When we real- really may be. Butchers.
The trust.
I explained that, how we rent the tallow and how the Protestants have rippled down, personally, all of Eastern Europe, so. Anyways.
No, I think it's a good, good thing that we have, we make them apply for.
Okay. So we'll act on that tomorrow, um where are we, where are we acting? We're sorry, do we, though, can we act on this? Did we already?
You guys already have, have you submitted it?
I have submitted the application, our application was approved, and now they sent us the contract and we will approve the grant agreement.
Okay, gotcha, this was the granted reason. Good. Um yeah. Yep.
You're.
So.
Next one's spot.
By circumstance, there was a clerical error with our um vehicle ordering, and I.
I'm bored, I'll just move to ratify this.
Anyways, it's coming. Anyways, it's coming, the way coronavirus impacted the current order, it's very advantageous, advantageous.
Very good.
And I.
Way to be thinking ahead, though.
Right.
I made the factory, that's a lot of it.
Uh anyways, it's working out in the budget, and I would recommend the change to the fleet plan.
Which will, uh, instead of getting a fleet in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, a pool vehicle, we're, we're.
Which will plan, will now get it in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, so we're just flip-flopping the pool vehicle and the sheriff deputy vehicle, because we're going to have to pay for the sheriff deputy vehicle next fiscal year. They emailed me Monday, yesterday, and said I can amend the R N Q order that we did in, I think, February. But I can't just amend that, I'd have to do a whole new R N Q process for the um sheriff deputy vehicle. It'll be easy, but we still have to redo that process. And so, budget-wise, they were, it works to not have to do three vehicles next year and only the one this year. So, I really planned ahead and it all shook out in our favor.
Nice save, nice save. Wonderful planning.
So, there's action consideration on this, uh, I'll entertain a motion on that ratification.
I'll make a motion to accept ratification of.
We're just doing an administrative change to our fleet plan.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept administrative change to our fleet plan. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, um, are, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I was gonna make your split.
Okay.
She does.
We're good to go. Alright, well, thank you, Melanie, for all your work on that.
I worked really hard on it.
Yeah.
Lot of extra stuff. I have to receive.
Okay, it all, it all works out in the end, maybe it's.
So fun. That's the best part of the day. We had journeying until noon?
Uh, yeah, I would like to adjourn till one o'clock.
Is our next presentation at one or one thirty?
Nick's coming at one, he has a budget request, and he's gonna do a quick update, and then we have the climate lake thing at one-thirty, I believe.
Alright, sounds good, alright, we will.
So did you hear that, Kevin?
Yep.
That'd be perfect timing.
Yeah, perfect timing. Got this place booked, we're journeying right now, five minutes to midnight.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for your input and the share that you've been up to recently. Um, so I was gonna break it down into different sectors, starting with energy work, and then even forestry work, and a couple of other topics. Uh, and if you have any questions, they're up at, we can scout, not an hour left, elaborate on anything, so, try to keep it fairly brief. But on the energy side, so we are continuing to do energy efficiency uh work on the commercial sector, and that includes assisting local businesses with renewable energy projects, energy efficiency projects, and delivering the energy trust incentives. Um, so last year, we did nineteen L E D replacements for local businesses at no cost to the business owners, and completed two group top solar projects. Right now, we have about three or four businesses who are doing H VAC upgrades and insulation, which I'm sure as we all know is probably a pretty, pretty big problem in the downtown commercial district. So we're just trying to up the efficiency of a lot of those buildings. As we dig into this, we're finding that a lot of them have roofs that are in a bad condition as well. But through this work, I've been able to develop a lot more relationships with contractors. Um, of course, prioritizing, prioritizing local contractors first, but moving over to Climate County and uh sometimes to Shute County if we have to bring down roofless contracts, contractors in. Um, in addition to commercial, we're doing uh residential energy assessments, and we started that in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so that includes going into homes, um, and assessing the existing equipment, and if the, if, if any projects or upgrades qualify for energy trust incentives. And also on the residential side, a big one that we're pushing right now is ceiling insulation, because again, a lot of homes don't have ceiling insulation, and the incentives um can get that installation done uh at no cost to the homeowners, so we've got a few homeowners moving forward with that. Uh, let's see here, so moving on to the next project in energy, uh, starting this spring, probably in the next month or two, um, L C R I in conjunction with Y East R C and D at Dufer, and O I T will be completing irrigation system efficiency assessments. Um, we're moving that both in Climate, Lake, and Hardy Counties, and those that are served by industrial utilities, uh, it will be of no cost. Those that are in Surprise Valley and other cooperative territories have to provide a little bit of participant match, uh, but we're working on um finding match funding, so it's, so it won't cost anything out of pocket either. Uh, but it's full-blown irrigation efficiency assessment that looks at the pumps, the piping, the gas, it's the actual application of water, um, that identifies opportunities uh for improvements in those systems. And then it also um places or positions project participants well if they want to pursue N R C S irrigation grants. So. Next, we have uh an update with the rare AmeriCorps participant, who I think you probably know, Jonathan. Um, he is currently implementing the second year of a two-year project. It provides project development assistance to local businesses and irrigation producers, or agricultural producers with um developing or implementing renewable energy projects. Uh, for the, the last U S D A REAP grant application deadline, which was March thirty-first, Jonathan submitted six REAP applications, which is very good. And we actually also just got word that we received funding through the U S D A Rita Program to host a rare participant with L C R I for the next two years at no cost to us. Uh, and Jonathan will be staying on for a second year, uh, and then we'll bring, be bringing on a different rare AmeriCorps of the fall, uh, doing, doing the same work, so we're pretty excited about that. And Jonathan is also developing a drone imagery program right now with L C R I. There's a lot of moving parts to that, um, there's a lot of unforeseen liability with offering drone aerial imagery that we didn't really know. Uh, but we're hoping when we, when we figure out all the liability issues, we'll be able to provide uh drone imagery for ad producers, and just really anybody else in the community that needs it, whether it be real estate, or business owners, or just various other applications.
What, what kind of case would they use it for?
Uh, well, there's been talk about, like, for people who are going out to, like, cut and harvest, flying over the field, because we have a, an infrared camera, so you can see heat signatures and stuff like that. If there's, like, fawns laying down, or like other animals in the field, you want to look at that. Um, you know, just wanna check it before you go out and harvest or cut. Um, our camera can also look at moisture transpiration, so you could fly it at different times of the day to see where you're losing the most moisture on fields, or having most evaporation. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different applications for it, and a big part of what Jonathan is doing is figuring out exactly what those are. The camera's far more advanced than we really know how to utilize it effectively yet. Uh, so a big part of what he is doing is determining how it can be used, but we foresee opportunities to use it on potentially fire, um, or other natural resource-related projects as well. May look at trying to do government contracting, but we don't, we don't know exactly how we wanna use that. Um, the last thing on the energy side is Lake County uh carbon offset study, which I think you are all aware of, if not, where I can provide a recap. It's assessing how much uh carbon essentially we've offset with renewable energy development in the county versus our, our aggregate emissions, uh, and the, the draft report is almost completed. Uh, draft sections have all been released for review, uh, and the final draft report should be out in the next month or two. Um, and when that's finalized, it'll go out for the peer review process, and from drafts that have come out, uh, it's pretty positive, it's a good report. So, uh, we're excited with the, the preliminary results of that, so as soon as there's an actual, like, formal draft out, I should be able to share it, uh, with you guys, so you can get your eye on it too. Uh, but so.
You said that they were gonna have that done by September, or we ahead of schedule?
We're a little bit ahead of schedule, yeah, it depends on the peer review process, and I think that might extend time, you know, to September, I don't, I don't really know a lot about the peer review process. But they're doing it both internally at O I T, and then they're going through, like, their personal connections that they had at O I T, so it should be an expedited peer review process, um, but I, I don't know exactly what that looks like. But we are ahead of schedule for the most part, which is great news. Um, so that's kind of the energy stuff, are there any, any other questions before we move on to forestry?
I don't have any questions, sounds good to me, cool.
Um, on forestry side things, we are gearing up for our nineteenth monitoring season, we'll have a few open uh spots this year, so. I'm gonna just do what we've always done in coordinate with the high school, to get some more uh local youth involved with that. We don't know exactly how many openings we'll have, but we'll have probably at least two, maybe up to five, uh, I'm not entirely sure about that. But that's going well. Uh, L C R I's data analyst, Julia, has been working with the Fremont Mindema to build a website that highlights the work of the monitoring crew and makes all that data uh publicly accessible. Um, and that is actually gonna become public next month, and that's a pretty great resource, it does a really good job of showing the work that has been accomplished with the C F L R project, um, and really just offering the opportunity to get the data that they've collected over the past twenty years out there to anybody who wants it, so it's very comprehensive data set, we're pretty excited about that. Let's see, so next, we are working with the K L F H P, uh, and the Fremont Mindema National Forest, and the Forest Collaborative to submit a ten-year collaborative forest landscape restoration project extension. Uh, and you'll hear more about this during your next presentation, but I just wanted to touch on that briefly, because L C R I is involved with this as well, uh, and that's what's funded our monitoring crew over the last ten years. So the program is closed off to new project applications, uh, but we were allowed to submit an extension, so we are requesting approximately twenty million dollars over the next ten years. Uh, if awarded, that'll continue to fund our monitoring program and support uh the restoration work that's going on uh in that C F L R project area, which is essentially the, the old Lakeview Sustain Yield Unit boundaries, but as they expanded to the northwest a bit. Yeah, more on that during the next presentation. Uh, in addition to that, we're also working with K L F H P to develop an all-land forest monitoring plan for Climate and Lake Counties, so it's a plan that would be used for monitoring activities um in every application, both on private and public lands, and this is kind of an innovative approach to monitoring, because it would standardize uh the monitoring protocols, protocols across uh both Lake and Climate Counties, so that it would be, it can be easy to compare data, um, and then make inferences. And then.
I'll just say that uh the monitoring is a key piece there, that I think helps us get some of that funding, because we're, we're showing the data, you know, of, of the good work that's being done. If you don't have monitoring, if you don't have a plan for monitoring, that can hinder your chances.
It can, and having that data available allows us to take a data-driven approach when, when essentially presenting new or innovative or different strategies for forest management to the collaborative, uh, because uh monitoring data is objective, uh, you can't really argue the science, if the numbers say this, then, you know, that's what it is.
Probably keeps from things being protested, too.
Exactly, yep, it, it's objective, and it's a very transparent and straightforward approach. And then the last project on the forestry side of things is, we are pursuing funding right now to build a new program area that will look at monitoring um soil and the carbon content of soil over time in response to restoration projects, uh, with the end goal of hopefully showing that as you're managing these areas, particularly right, 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 area that has been approached by juniper, that you're, when you're removing that juniper, you're allowing the soil to sequester and capture and store more carbon, um, and then ultimately using that data to generate carbon credits to support private land's restoration initially, and then perhaps even other applications, in the future, maybe federal applications, uh, if we get that far. But this is a pretty exciting project, just because the carbon markets are developing so rapidly, um, and there's a big opportunity in the future to use that data in one way or another, even if there's not the, the economic benefit that we foresee right now, there's still a lot of ecological benefit to having that information. Uh, and all the, the latest research and, and literature is showing that paying attention to carbon content and nitrogen content of soil can potentially be used as an overall ecosystem health indicator, uh, when it comes to this type of stuff. So potentially, maybe in the long run, may be a way to um reduce some of that more resource-intensive monitoring that we currently do right now. Uh, but it's a pretty exciting project, uh, but like I said, we're still in the process of, of fundraising for that. And the first step in that process would really be determining the method for, for actually going out and collecting soil samples, uh, and then determining the cause associated with doing the testing to see what the actual carbon content in that soil is, and then going for that. Questions on forestry? Okay. Um, so next, I want to talk about the film a little bit that we were in and some of the related efforts. So, uh, the film that we were featured in, Other Side of the Hill, uh, was released publicly in twenty-twenty, and we attended approximately ten or twelve virtual screenings and discussion panels, um, with various groups across the state to, to screen that film and have a discussion about the contents of that. It was, it was very well received and got a lot of positive attention, um, so we're pretty excited about that. The next thing planned for that is, we've been invited up to present um for half an hour about both forestry and renewable energy and the nexus of those two things, is we'll screen the film uh in person, so we don't know the date that that's gonna take place yet, uh, but it should be sometime next month and a half or so. We expect about a thousand people to show up for that. Uh, but it's a great opportunity just to highlight what's going on here in Lake County and continue to um build a positive image that we have around renewable energy development and sustainability, so we're pretty excited about that. Uh, and then following the O M Z screening presentation, uh, within the next couple of weeks, or maybe a month after that, we've been asked to tour around the country, uh, and show the film and the presentation at just a handful of different spots across the country to, again, highlight the work that's going on here in Lake County. Uh, so it's another great opportunity to highlight what's going on here on the ground and showing that uh, we really do take an innovative approach when it comes to sustainability, um, and taking care of the land that we have. So, we're, we're excited about that, but we don't know exactly when that's gonna start, so I'll keep you guys updated with that. Uh, questions?
I haven't seen the, yet, film, I think.
Also enjoy it.
Yeah.
Sounds good, it's well done.
Yeah, awesome.
Thanks. I'd still like to get that, uh, before the E O C C O, uh, the, the E O S D A. Got these, do a screening with them.
Yeah, we're happy to help coordinate that, and make that happen, so, whatever needs to be done. One happy. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to note is that we're still uh pretty heavily involved with some local committees and boards, including the recently formed Solar Siding Committee, um, the South Central Oregon Economic Development District Board of Directors, uh, South Central Oregon Regional Solutions Committee, uh, and the Lake County College Advisory Board. So, that, that's all I have today, and that's all I wanted to present on and speak about, but if you have any other questions or wanna discuss, any of that stuff or anything else? Action.
How's the uh relationship been with K L F H P?
The K L F H P has been a positive experience, they're a pretty well-oiled machine as far as what they do on private lands. They have a really efficient process, and they have a really strong network. We, I'm sure as, as you guys know, again, we, we merged the, the Forest Collaborative with the K L F H P, and that was kind of a new process for the K L F H P, because they had been so focused on private land's work. Um, so the federal side of things was kind of a different ballgame for them, but I think it's been a very positive move, and I, we're a longtime member of the K L F H P, um, and it's, they do a lot of good things for, for the county. They do a lot of good things and create a lot of great opportunities, so it's been, been nothing but positive.
Yeah, they, they promoted federal projects in the past, but.
Yeah.
Didn't know how to be more involved, probably, you guys are probably helping them out.
Yeah, we are, um, and we're really, we're taking over anything that's federally, I mean, related to federal land management. You know, the, the Forest Service is a participant in the K L F H P, but um, you know, still with a focus mostly on private lands, and there was some. You know, still with a focus mostly on private lands. And there was some discussion in the K L F H P in the past about federal projects. But having the, the collaborative actually sitting as a member of the K L F H P and merging those two groups allows us to have like a separate working committee specifically for federal projects. Um, and we essentially show up as a line item on K L F H P agendas just to get an update on what's going on with the collaborative and any federal projects and any opportunities to collaborate between. Uh, private and federal projects. So it's, it's a good move and it was a natural, natural next step.
That was nice.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate if you have to take them.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do need to talk to y'all in some time.
Okay. Let's move by.
Sounds good.
So are we having the presentation from the K L?
You have ten minutes.
Yeah, at the one thirty minute.
Okay.
No, it's one thirty. Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Um, do you gentlemen have anything else? Should we take a recess till they're, till they're ready? I don't want to. They're, I can kind of go pow pow out there, kind of having some time to go over their last minute steps.
Pre-strat.
Yeah. Basically, yeah. Before they come talk to us, sir.
Go crash your party.
I was out there already.
Just to talk to you.
I think I made a mistake.
Did you?
Give us an idea.
No, no, please don't.
Actually, it's okay. It's okay.
Did you guys want to increase the contribution to L C R I?
So maybe we could talk about that.
So you're cresting, uh, fifteen?
Yeah, that, that's what we normally get.
Yeah, that's what we normally get.
But we know for funding all of this stuff, so.
So.
I just think.
So there's been some discussion on, on another partnership that we were in with Central Oregon.
Yeah, so, uh, we kind of stepped out of that. Yeah, Central Oregon's, uh. Version of Clamath Lake Forest Partnership.
Oh, interesting.
Which is a cohesive strategy group with stellar.
Huh.
Uh, asked if we would, uh, re-up. And we've only, uh, given them money once.
Okay.
And we're only two to three percent of their budget or their area. And dealing with the extreme north end of the county. They haven't necessarily gotten to anything in Lake County.
Yeah.
And they don't have any plans to be in Lake County, but they appreciate our, uh, support. So we thanked them and we will continue to support them, but we're not gonna support them in the version of money. So, uh, one thing that I proposed to the other commissioners was that we look at supporting K L F H P as well. Because now they're kind of, you know, gotten a pretty stronghold as well. And obviously you know that. But, uh, obviously, uh, we need to support L C R I too, so. Kind of that was headed.
Yeah.
I know that we've had some discussions, maybe it'll come up here in our one thirty about the contribution. Quite the forest partnership. I don't know. I imagine.
Well, I guess that kind of begs the question, as far as the scope of work that L C R I is doing, is there anything that you would like, you guys would like to see us focusing on more? Or changing our scope of work in any sort of way? So we better support the efforts of the county and align what we have going on?
Oh, go ahead, yes. I, I, I do have a response to that. I.
Good.
Being that we've stepped away from the Central Oregon part of it and Clamath County goes and extends all the way to the north corner of Lake County. I think I'd like to see maybe some of the forests up there on the north end being taken into consideration.
Like especially like where we're starting to get into that state lodge hole, so.
I think I'd like to take it because it's the Lake County Resource Initiative. It's, it's L C R I. It's, it's the whole county.
Absolutely.
And because Clamath Lake is referencing it in both counties, but we have a relationship with Clamath Lake. And with L C R I and we've stepped out of the relationship with the other one because we won't get in anything. So I think that I'd like to bolster our relationship if we could and look at maybe. Taking in some of those other corners of the county that. Were maybe getting neglected in the past.
And this maybe isn't the right way to frame this question, but are you thinking in terms of from an economic development standpoint or from terms of just a natural? Natural resource management standpoint?
Natural resource management.
Natural resource management. Okay. Okay.
On both.
Yeah.
Honestly.
A lot of relation between those two things or opportunities.
Yeah. That's just me though.
Gotta keep in mind, there was quite a project up there in Oakland, uh, not very long ago. And if you haven't been to Oakland Flat or some of that country up there a while, um, the forest has done a lot of thinning up there. But I happen to know that the forest has a plan and eventually they will get back up to the north end. But what they're trying to prioritize right now is where all the statistics show the overgrowth. And the relationship to, uh, public, um, potential fire crown potential, things like that. So you look at that whole block where, uh, former Clamath Tribe land is. And all the basically the south, South Lake County and South Clamath County have, are going through quite a process of restoration right now. That's fair. So there has been some projects on the north end of the county, but doesn't mean that.
Uh, I do think that this expanded, um, C F L R, uh, extension application. As I just briefly noted, and there will be maps of this during the next presentation, the area to the north was expanded to the west. However, I don't think it stretches all the way over to Clamath Tribe's ceded land. Um, so when we actually see that map up on the screen, um, that may open the door, present a good time to have that conversation around how we can be more impactful. Just so when you can see that map, what's actually going to be included in that extension application. Because it's, it's an opportunity to leverage work that's already going to be done if we're awarded that, that extension.
Do you ever get asked to do any work with, uh, with the SageCon folks?
Really? Not so much.
Lucky guy.
As far as like, uh, grouse habitat type stuff?
Yeah.
No, I think L C R I was involved with that in the past, but I don't know a lot about it in hiding.
It's a very slow turning wheel.
I have found some stuff in our office that refers to it, but I haven't personally been involved.
Let's make sure that's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, I mean, we'll, this will be kind of something that we can think about once we get the other presentation, have the other presentation as well. Kind of, we, we have a lot of things to consider, but.
Absolutely.
So are you, is that consensus to approve his request or?
Do we have that for action considerations in there?
Yes, we could, yeah.
It's true. Because we have a donation. What you requested is needed.
Yeah, eight thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's what we have historically given.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have consensus for me. Definitely. I think the question was whether or not we wanted to increase it.
Should I?
Is there a need?
There's always a need for unrestricted funding, um, because of where L C R I is for staffing. And I, I am the only unrestricted staff member. It's hard to balance my time between having unrestricted funding to cover my time and. Do you think such as try to expand the organization and generate income to bring on another employee so we can actually. Expand our impact. So if, if the board commissioner would consider an increase, I would, yeah, I would request that. And you can do so in writing if that would be better or.
I don't know if you suspect they need to do it.
Okay.
I mean, we're all thinking about it. We're actually here.
Yeah, I plan on giving you fifteen thousand and one dollar.
Okay. We'll take it.
There you go. I guess, you know, let, let's, being my first year, I, I'd like to stick with the plan. Stick with fifteen thousand, go through another, but to go through a budget cycle and I would have a better feel.
That's appropriate.
That's be my comfort.
You can always follow through something.
Cause we're also, uh, looking at K L F H P as well.
Correct.
I'd make the motion to approve fifteen thousand dollars to L C R I.
Motion on the table. Is there a second? Motion to make a second then. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, you have fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I hear some voices. Floor is you guys.
Since the previous motion, we've been had on the deal.
Time he's not here, it's not funny. Oh. We'll get you one. I think we all got one, so. All right.
Oh.
So while they're setting this up, Nick, me and get this man a hat.
Yeah, that's right. He's the only one that doesn't have one now, huh?
Put it on a list, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much for taking the time to let us come in and talk about the Clamath Lake Forest Self Partnership. So my name is Autumn Muir. And I am the Uplands Coordinator for the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council. And I've got a bunch of the partners with the K L F H P. Um, I guess, do we introduce first or introduce?
We can, real quick. My name is Amy Marcus. I work for Fremont Mountain National Forest.
Good seeing you, Amy.
Casey Johnson. I work with the Oregon Department of Forestry, purely.
Good seeing you, Casey.
Justin Howlett, I'm the Federal Forest Restoration Coordinator, Coordinator out of Clamath.
Seeing you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jason Pettigrew, I'm a stewardship forester for the Oregon Department of Forestry in Clamath Falls.
And then the other two people that are in the room are also members of the K L F H P. I'm just me as well.
I'm just a curious model producer. Julie note.
Nick Johnson with L C R I.
All right. So just a real quick, um, I guess, update and or reminder, the Clamath Lake Forest Self Partnership is a nonprofit. Five oh three, five oh one C three formed back in nineteen ninety five. And so the mission of the K L F H P is to facilitate restoration projects on public and private forest lands. In Lake and Clamath Counties through education, outreach and diverse partnerships, which we are definitely doing. So over the years, the K L F H P has been extremely successful in planning and implementing cross boundary. Landscape scale restoration and wildfire restoration projects. So, um. Okay. So one of the best ways that, uh, to demonstrate what we do is we thought, we made this video last year. It was funded through an Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, uh, Grant. It was called the Forest Health Stakeholder Engagement Grant for Clamath and Lake Counties. And so, um, it's, it's a pretty short video. It's about seven minutes and we just want to show it to you because it kind of encapsulates everything that we're working for. So. Yeah, it might take a second. Okay. Um, while that's peeing up, I guess I'll say that this is an ongoing grant that, um, is not completed yet. It had several objectives. Um, to, uh, outreach and engage with our, our stakeholders. So we did, um. That forest brochure was part of this grant that went out to almost four thousand people between Lake and Clamath County. And then we've done some workshops. We'll do some more workshops and then this video was the other key part. So. Um, it will wrap up at the end of this year and we'll close and conclude that.
Yeah, there's some reason not, um, nothing.
I, I actually believe I've seen this video.
If you click through the progression of slides.
Yeah, you may try the next. Click next, maybe it'll pop up.
Well, you could go to a website. Why don't you simply grab it off the website? And it's on YouTube. So. We've been trying to share this video as much as we can. Um, you type in K L F H P dot one. Um, yeah, we've been using it for presentations with the Rotary Club locally and other landowner engagement, um, efforts, one-on-one meetings.
This is our home. It's an eighty acre ranch. When we bought it twenty-six years ago, it had been abused a lot. It had been logged. Nobody was hearing it.
We used to pull it right by hand around the house. But you know, eighty acres, you can't do it all.
Our way to zero was a crown plant. That ladder fuelled up and set that tree on fire and then it hit the tops of the trees. It died.
From a fire perspective, it's very important for these private landowners to feel secure.
The Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership is a collaborative group of private landowners, state and federal agencies. Conservation organizations and forestry consultants. So we bring all of the, the technical resources to a project. Uh, but also the financial resources to help get things accomplished on the ground. We're able to come in in a non-regulatory role to work with them to make sure that. Not only are we meeting the landscape objectives for forest health, but also a landowner's goals for management of their property.
We didn't know how intrusive this might be for us.
When we found out somebody was going to be coming out here and working all over our land, there was a certain amount of. I don't know about that. We need to know a lot more. We just said, what do you want to know? And the answer to our question. So it wasn't what we wanted to hear. Then we talked about it and figured out a possibility. There was a real decision made, I think, at the turn of the century that fire suppression was the name of the game. They weren't putting up with this anymore. So normally if fire would go through, everything would, I guess, if, you know, in the tree world, they'd be all happy. So, but without the fire, we have to get some of the burnable matter out so that a fire that does come through is not beneficial enough.
After World War Two, timber harvesting increased in the West. Large trees were removed, opening up the forest for even more small trees and trunks to grow densely because of the lack of natural fire due to fire suppression. Because trees are growing so close together and tree species, sizes and ages are so similar across large areas. Fires not only move usually from acreage, but so do disease and insect outbreaks, which are now killing trees or reducing the vitality of really large seconded forests. It's like getting in a room that has a limited air supply and with five people in that room, you're okay. But if I were to put a thousand people in that room, uh, we, we'd all get stressed out and some of us wouldn't make it. Well, the same thing with this forest. Fire is an important element in these ecosystems. But when you have that massive amount of biomass, uh, and dead fuel, it, it does more harm than good. Compounding the problem, more homes are being built more densely on private land in remote areas, which is often intermixed with federal land. Fire seasons start earlier and last longer with temperatures that have steadily increased over the last hundred and forty years. Today, when a fire starts by lightning or gms, they burn hotter, larger and more severely. This is why we all need to be working together through partnerships to manage for healthier forests and watersheds through thinning and prescribed fire. At a scale that can truly make a difference. Prescribed fire is, is attending to it. It's no different than the same tile except you're talking.
It's no different than the same tile except you're talking about landscape, it's a little personal stuff. One major tool.
In this country, the juniper has its own, and it comes in where it was traditionally in pine forests.
You can hardly find the cows in some of these fields and pissing trees with some things. We remove the juniper, but it also creates a lot more feed for the cattle. And opens up the country, you can see where you're going.
One of the goals for the Lintons was to try to return or move towards the historic fire regime that was prevalent or present out here. They were on board and wanted to forward the burning, but one of the concerns was the Forest Service piece that was directly adjacent to them. But if it went onto the Forest Service side, it would torch out a bunch of trees and cause a lot of issues. And so through this partnership, I was able to take that feedback, the Forest Service then went and identified and looked at their side of the fence, and realized that they could do treatment, now this whole area can be cross-boundary burned, which will benefit the Rintons, and it will benefit the Forest Service. And without this project, I don't think that that would have come about at all.
Shared stewardship is really the recognition that wildfire does not know ownership boundaries. And so, federal, state, universities, and then our local nonprofits and private landowners need to be working together to reduce the risk of wildfire. And the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnership is really a leader in putting it into practice. So we work with the landowners to map their forest and fire risk at pretty much no cost or obligation to them. And we can provide information about the condition of the forest, of their forest, and the recommendations on how to reduce their wildfire risk. And also discuss treatment options best suited for your property management, your goals, and the landscape that you live on.
These are ranchers that are managing their land, we've got timber that's coming off these lands. These are, you know, working landscapes that are important to the community and important to the economics of this small town.
We were hesitant because we didn't want an intrusion, and things to get out of our control. And I feel we've had control over this process from start to finish.
They have suggestions, they have knowledge, they have expertise, but if we didn't have that, it was whatever we wanted done with our property. Our goal was to get this fire safe and then, and they did that.
We haven't really gotten the public aware of how important this is.
We've been spending a lot of time and effort, we've been doing a lot of good work here, but we're not done. And we want to keep maintaining that.
Managing for a healthy forest is managing for the health of the economy and health of the culture, health of the community, health of the society. Everyone wins in this.
We're looking at that.
Yeah. That's the video. I forwarded it to Berkeley. Did you get a response back?
Yeah, they both appreciated it, and that spurred further chat.
Okay, so we're going to play a little bit of musical chairs here as we move through the rest of our slides, and just make sure that all the partners that are present are going to help explain the rest of it, and next up is Casey.
Well, sorry, I'm not told against you that your next program.
He's actually my brother, but you know. Awesome, thanks again for inviting us down to chat with you guys, we appreciate it. Again, my name is Casey Johnson, I work with ODF here in Lakeview. Yeah, so, the KLFHP, as you guys kind of already know, it's a big group, a collaboration, a lot of different folks. And overall, we know we focus in Klamath and Lake Counties. And then within that, we have kind of some different major projects going on. However, to, you know, kind of address and get to the end goals of those projects, there's often a lot of other components that feed into that. And so even though we'll have a group, or, you know, kind of the Lake County folks will be addressing this stuff here. Lake County, there still is, you know, pieces that kind of get built to facilitate the greater projects. And so, through that, we kind of develop different subcommittees to look at addressing kind of the smaller components of, you know, maybe two to five or six different folks get together to work on. One factor that'll go into the North Warner project, for example. So, within our partnership, we probably have, I don't know, ten to twelve, a little more subcommittee. I blabbed, I didn't read them exactly, or count the number. As you can see here, we really try to cover all the different components between fire, you know, the fire response and fire mitigation side of things, prevention if we can, as well as each landscape effort has their own subcommittee. So we have the Chillicothe Community Project on there, we have North Warner, which kind of marked into, North Warner and Thomas Creek, which then marked into kind of an all-lands subcommittee that looks at what is now three different landscapes, but I think we'll get to that here in a couple of minutes. We also have the prescribed fire component of the subcommittee. We have the Lakeview Stewardship Group and the CDFRP Project. That is, I'm not sure, I guess, if LCRI updated on that positively, or we'll maybe cover it later on. But we did end up merging the Lakeview Stewardship Group with the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnership. And so they are now, I believe, a member or a partner within the KLFHP. And so within the greater partnership, we have a subcommittee that kind of works directly with the Lakeview Stewardship Group, but then also they're very involved and integrated into everything that goes on in Lake County for the main sweep in that project. There's also the Lakeview Community Response Subcommittee. They kind of looks at the smoke intrusion and air quality components, and then we have the Good Neighbor Authority. And with that, we kind of look to collaborate and add efforts where we can for good neighbor stuff. And then, as that video was a demonstration, we have the Stakeholder Engagement Subcommittee, and that really works across both counties and all the projects, but, you know, each project has its own, I would even almost classify it as a subcommittee that works within the greater vision of that. And then, we have a Monitoring Subcommittee as well, and then kind of a Subcommittee for the Summer Lake Project. Kind of hard, I'm sure there's probably actually a couple other ones that we have that probably aren't on the list, but we definitely make subcommittees to address any topics or situations that can pop up. This map kind of shows all the different projects within Klamath and Lake County. However, obviously, you guys are probably more interested in the Lake County side of things. So, I guess I'll start with, what would have been, I would assume the first project on the map up there, which would be the North Warner Project. I think we've chatted with you guys a couple different times about that one. The second project that we added in would have been the Thomas Creek Project, I believe. And so between the Thomas Creek and the North Warner Projects, I think that landscape covers close to four hundred thousand acres, and those are directly adjacent. And so North Warner is just kind of on the back half of implementation or restoration, I guess, if you will. And then with Thomas Creek, we're kind of just starting on that one. Not exactly sure the sequencing of the other projects. Bear Wallow would be the one up north, and then we have the Site Camp projects, and I believe both of those are Forest Service and ODF collaboration, I believe. And then, more recently, we've added in the Summer Lake Project and South Warner Projects.
So what is the Site Camp project, because that's with the nature conservancy for the most part. Is that correct?
Yeah. Fortunately, I don't know an awful lot about that.
Yeah, it's mainly the Forest Service and TNC, Site Camp Marsh. They've been doing a lot of prescribed burning across property for the last couple of years.
Gotcha. And what about Bear Wallow?
So Bear Wallow is, that's a newer project, Justin, I'll touch on that here later in the presentation. But it's Forest Service and then Eco Trust, and then Gilcrest State Forest. So there's an all-lands project that encompasses those three ownerships.
Okay.
And we're also working really closely with ODFW on that project too, because that's high priority, you know, your habitat. So they're a partner as well.
Now, looking at the Summer Lake Project, that looks like it's mainly along the east side of the rim. So it's not up top, it's down below, it's mainly on the watershed side of things, and what's the projects around?
Right now, it's mainly, and we have a slide on this, so we'll be going into a little bit more detail on each of these projects, yeah. So I can cover it up.
So, for each of the different landscapes and projects, we're going to really try to see and look for any type of grant funding we can to help fund these projects. And with the North Warner Project, that was kind of the first landscape effort, and that was where we, or the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partner received its first Joint Chiefs Grant from the USDA. And that was a partnership with the Forest Service and NRCS, to treat cross-boundaries and at landscape scale. And so that funding source and that grant, allocation of funding is met the deadline, it added three years of funding. However, we did apply for a Joint Chiefs project for the Thomas Creek Landscape, and that was awarded. And so it will primarily focus on carrying out implementation on the private lands within the Thomas Creek Landscape. And then, also, it's allowing both of the North Warner to sign up again as well, hopefully to kind of wrap up any treatment that we missed with that, or in the look to prescribe fire within that landscape. And then, obviously, it has the Forest Service funding part of it that goes towards the Forest Service. And then, we are, right now, this is the first year, so we've got signups going on right now for private landowners within the Thomas Creek Landscape, and working to get folks signed up there. We don't have a deadline on the application deadline for that yet, but it should give us about two or three weeks.
The next part is a little bit complicated, thanks to COVID, and everything else in our life. So we were all geared up to apply for a large focus investment partnership with OWEB, which would have been about twelve million dollars over six years, to just explode our efforts and really take care of everything that we want to take care of. When COVID hit and the restaurants shut down and the lottery slot machines shut down, the revenue was not available for the OWEB grants, and that's where they get most of their money, is from the lottery revenue. So they canceled that entire application, couldn't even apply. So, after some other time and some other digging, and they found other monies, they did open the regular spring open solicitation. And that is what we decided to take, our larger, which is that entire landscape that you see on there, that would have been our fifth, our focus investment partnership. And we scaled it back to basically just include Zone One, which is the North Warner, and just Zone Two, which is the south end of the Thomas Creek. So we asked for a lot less money, it's only good for two years, and it's much smaller geographic, so that's why it's called the mini-fifth. So we were successful in getting that, we just got awarded that on March ninth. So we are right now working on allocation and, you know, where we're going to do the work, what landowners to work with. And of course, you know, I'm working very closely with Casey on who can sign up for NRCS, and who can sign up for the OWEB money. Some landowners will get both, and how can we leverage and get the most done, and kind of tie it together so that it is that landscape-scale restoration. So, that is that one. The fifth, I will say, the Focus Investment Partnership. And again, we have one of those in Lake County, the Warner Basin Aquatic Habitat Partnership. That's what that is, and they're in their second biennial of that, out in Warner Basin, working on all the fish passage and stream improvements.
Their second biennial, or the second part of the biennial?
They are on their second biennial, they're in year three of, so it's six years, yeah. So, that's what we're hoping to get for the Uplands side with this. They will open those applications again in January of twenty-two. So, we'll have to do some modifications to our application. You know, the Bratton Fire burned up a lot of Zone Three, so it's gonna take some rewording and some extra work, but we're pretty much ready to go to go back in and shoot for that goal again. The other grant that we put in for last spring was this Prescribed Fire Technical Assistance Grant. And that one basically focuses in that same geographic area, because there's a need to develop short and long-term strategies for the location and the frequency of prescribed fire, so that we can maintain all this thinning investment. You know, we've done all this work in the North Warner's, and we're starting to do the work in Thomas Creek. But if you don't maintain it with prescribed fire as a tool, you kind of lose the whole intention of the efforts and the money spent there. So, this Technical Assistance Grant will help us complete the necessary planning for prescribed burns for private landowners, and we're going to try and figure out unit layouts, identify the control lines, the necessary agreements, the burn plans. But the big one is basically opportunities for private landowners to burn with adjacent federal agencies. And we have to figure out kind of all the protocols associated with that, of liability and other permits. So, it's kind of a big unknown, you think that other places would have it figured out by now, but it's not. So, OWEB is really excited to see us move forward with figuring out how to get this actually done on the ground. And the other part of that grant is also just increasing the public awareness, education, outreach, and getting people to kind of accept that prescribed fire is a necessary tool to move forward. And then, the prescribed land, prescribed fire, which is part of that, we are really excited to tell you that we are finally, after six years maybe of planning, going to have our first prescribed fire on Forest Service land that will cross over into private land next year. So, it's, it's a.
If we get the right guy.
Right, yes, of course. But it's all set up, the lighting authority's been signed, the landowners are on board, we are going to have a very small workshop associated with that. But it is exciting to see actual momentum there. And we'll use that as a template to move forward with other workshops and other prescribed fires from places where the Forest Service is involved, and start the fire on their property, and it goes over onto private land. We'll do some just private land only, where maybe we hire a contractor that is in charge of the prescribed burn. We'll do some ODF things, we've got plans for all kinds of interactions there, so.
In what zone was that prescribed fire?
The prescribed fire is Zone One, because the North Warner is the furthest along, the landscape is ready now for that next step.
Okay, good. Okay, so, the Summer Lake All Lands Project is, right now, it is primarily the area on the east face of the rim, and then down into the valley. A couple of years ago, we started this project, and it's a partnership with the High Desert RFPA. And it's basically to help the RFPA look at that landscape and really start thinking about wildfire pre-planning. As we all know, this is a landscape that we get wildfires, well, this is your backyard, fairly often. And then when we do, because of the nature of the landscape, the topography, the weather, we get really erratic fire behavior. And so I think it's pretty safe to assume that we're going to have another wildfire in that landscape at some point down the road. So any kind of pre-planning we can do, I think will be super helpful. And so with some Forest Service funding that we transferred to the RFPA through an agreement, they are doing structure assessments, so basically GPSing all the structures in that full landscape, and also assessing those structures. They're going to be mapping containment lines, and they're actually working with the Watershed Council to help out on that portion of the project. And then also to really start thinking about fuel mitigation projects that need to be completed in that landscape. I mean, a lot of that rim is already burned, but there's still some places that aren't burned that could use some juniper cutting, forest health treatments. There's an awful lot of shrub through that full landscape that we could be looking at masticating shrubs in strategic locations to help down the road. So we're also going to be trying to identify some of those kinds of projects. We actually, with this project, the land. We actually, with this project, the landowners are starting to team up and work together, which is pretty neat. And we have our first fuel mitigation project that's been identified. It's the Withers, the Elders, and the Otts property. And there's basically a chunk of land that did not burn in the winter fire, the Bratton Fire, or the Withers fire that they're looking at trying to do some restoration. So it's pretty neat that they're teaming up, working together. It also is immediately adjacent to a Forest Service project called the Launch Project, where we have already done all the finning treatments. We did those, I don't know, maybe six or eight years ago. So I think down the road, there might even be opportunities to do some prescribed burning across Forest Service and those private lands if the landowners are interested. And Autumn is also going to be submitting an OWEB proposal to help fund those restoration treatments on the private lands. So also, I'm also working on a BLM grant. The BLM is right in the middle of those three landowners. And they are wanting to also, you know, increase. So the Forest Service, private, and BLM all in one project.
So do you have to W?
I did also apply for some ODFW. So previously, the Mule Deer Initiative money, it was only for certain units. The Warner unit being one and the Fort Rock was another. They have just now expanded their Fort Rock MDI to what is called the Crescent based on some collared deer movement. And so includes this. So I, I asked for some money. I think a lot of it was already spoken for, so it's going to be pretty small. But right now, they've set about money five thousand maybe for the next biennial.
So getting back to your question earlier, so the focus right now is on the east face of the rim. But the Forest Service is planning to do the NEPA for a large project, I think 2023, I think is when we're scheduled to do that project. And it will include all the Forest Service below the rim as well as all that country on top of the rim. So down the road, that'll all get brought into this project. And then any projects that are identified through these efforts right now will, will feed that to the Forest Service as potential projects for us to include in the NEPA when we get to that point. So, so eventually, we'll be getting to the top of the rim.
Yeah. Well, I mean, lower part of that rim, that east face side, twenty years ago, had lots of trees on it.
I know.
But if every single time there's a fire, and it goes back to your point about the topography and just the terrain itself and the winds that are generated there, once a fire hits going around that rim, it doesn't stop. And there's, there's not, not a whole lot of places you can run a fire line up the face of that. So.
Exactly.
Yeah, it, it's hard. So I'm really excited to hear that there, there's partnership with the RFPA. Working with them to come up with a plan, how they can stop the dress or, or at least combat some of the fire and keep some of those homes protected. So many people, just over the last five to seven years, I've noticed that have been moving in and building homes, new homes right along that Highway thirty-one going all the way around there. I drive right to the center of that every single week, at least three times. So it's, you know, always, I was just amazed that through all the fires that we've had, we haven't lost more homes.
And the other thing we haven't done yet, but we plan to, is workshops for the community on defensible space kinds of treatments that they can do on their property.
That'd be great.
So Amy, will this have, they're planning pre-attack lines? Some of them are in place.
Yeah, I think with those roads or dozer lines from previous fires.
Will there be funding to refresh them every so often?
That's the hope, is that we can then, once we identify them, we can apply some funding to refresh them and keep those maintained.
Yeah, I remember the last one, the Bratton Fire, that along the Lizard's Place, especially there was some fire lines. People were saying, oh, no, there's a fire line up there in front of a cat. And everyone's like, where? There's no map with any of these lines on it.
And that's part of this. That's what, you know, I've been trying to get out there and basically GPS all of, anything that even looks like a fire line, a cattle trail, a skid trail, you know, and, and that's the thing, there are like, they're so repetitive. And like, we need to decide which one we want to keep, let the other ones go back, maintain this one, and then have a map of it that we can hand an incident team that comes in from wherever and just say, this is where they are.
Yeah, because those are the ones you actually want to keep that are actually defensible.
Changing landscape, landscape for sure.
Well, our wind doesn't help.
No.
Okay, so moving on to future things, the South Warner All Lands. This is the next round of applications and, and area that we are wanting to focus on. The OWEB open solicitation applications are due at the end of this month, April twenty-sixth. So we're proposing this right now. And it's really great because it is something that the Forest Service has already initiated. They are NEPA ready. They are moving over here. So now, you know, we're just right in lockstep with them to address the private lands. And this will be essentially a repeat process of the Thomas Creek. So we had a Thomas Creek Technical Assistance Grant to go in and map and inventory all of the non-industrial private land. We'll repeat that over here. That basically helps us identify the forest restoration needs and priorities. And then it also really helps us have products that we can give to these landowners. Hold a workshop, hold these one-on-one meetings and explain to them, you know, you have this amount of juniper, you have this amount of pine. This is what we need to thin. You know, do you want some assistance? And then we would apply for a restoration grant after, based on all of those things that are identified.
Do you need a lot of our support?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So you got the kind of Lakeview and Lake County lands encompassed in there?
We did, and we, we talked about that quite a bit, and we, we moved that boundary around. What we ended up landing on was the ODF boundary, just to kind of make it the same. And, and then also, just like the Thomas Creek, we will have some minimum thresholds. Like, we probably won't map anything under ten acres. Anything less than a ten percent forest can't be covered. So there are some, like, we're not doing everything just to keep it realistic, I guess. But yeah, a lot of the really small landowners right, like along town are, won't be included in this effort.
Yeah, it runs right along the edge of Lakeview, but includes those properties that have the potential for doing some dual migration type projects.
I have lots of ideas. It's okay.
We can talk about it. Yeah. There we go.
Dustin has lots of ideas. I'm not here to present.
Okay, so I'll try to make this really quick because we're short on time. But the collaborative forest landscape restoration program, the Fremont Wineema applied, it's called CFLRP. We applied for that program in 2012 and we were funded. So for the past ten years, we've had CFLR funding coming to the Fremont Wineema. And it's an incredible funding source, one because it's, it's ten years of guaranteed funding. And we can use that funding to support our timber, siliculture, wildlife, road maintenance, recreation. We can use it on a variety of different things. And, and this year, we have the opportunity to apply for an extension of that, of that project. And so we've put together a proposal. It would be an extension for ten years. If it is selected for funding, it would be about $20 million, about $2 million a year for ten years, which is huge. CFLR funding can only be used on Forest Service lands. That's one caveat. But we would certainly use that funding to leverage all of these other grant sources that we're applying for to support the work on the private lands. We are also asking for an, an expansion to the original boundary. The original boundary is the blue line on the map, and we're requesting an expansion of that boundary mainly in that north and western part of the project area. Part of it is to encompass that psyche and winter rim project that I mentioned earlier in its entirety. That way, we have the ability to, to spend that funding anywhere within those, that project.
Gotcha.
And so we are, I have talked to Commissioner Schulberger, and we would like a letter of support if the commissioners would be willing to write one. Nick is also requesting a letter of support from Widen and Mercury. And that would be super helpful to the proposal. These are very competitive or competing nationwide. It has to go through a whole FACA review. And then the recommended projects for funding actually goes to the Department of Agriculture for approval. So it, it's kind of a, a very competitive and lengthy process. But anything we can do to show support is really helpful to that.
So have you guys tried to get support from the public部门, so there's reps?
In, in CFLR or just everything we're doing?
Everything.
Everything? No, but one thing that we're, we, and it was actually Dustin's idea. One thing that we are going to start doing is giving updates to the congressional's, like, maybe once or twice a year. And we've talked about putting together a document of just things that we have going on, things that we recognize as maybe things that congressional's could be working on in terms of change in policy or legislation. So up until now, we really haven't been doing a very good job of keeping our congressional's updated. But we recognize that that is something we need to improve. So that's something our partnership is going to work on in the next year. It's another subcommittee.
Oh, you know, I mean, talk about your success stories, you know? I mean, the idea of having the first prescribed burn that incorporates both private and public land, that's a very significant deal. Shows partnership that we're, you know, successful.
Good question on this now. What is the, what is this one particular area right here? It just seems like this whole area right here is awfully specific. It just kind of like shoots out.
You know what? I think it actually might wrap around Gerhart Wilderness. I think it might encompass the Forest Service lands that are south of Gerhart. And so there's that little finger, just to bring in that, that portion of the Fremont Wineema, I think.
I just, yeah.
I'd have to verify that, but I, I think that might wrap around Gerhart.
And those other lands around it, I'm guessing those are private or they're just not Forest Service?
No, they would be private, west to the south, they'd be private.
It's blocked green then.
Yeah, I assumed that was a green diamond, private. So I'm wondering what some of that other stuff for the north would have. Because, you know, it's just, it shoots out, it's really isolated out there, but all, but it's affected still by whatever happens all around that. Especially with Gerhart moving this area. That's a very...
The white area to the north of that is, is Green Diamond's ground. And Gerhart is encompassed within the green area on the map already.
Gotcha.
Oh, it is.
So how is Gerhart encompassed in the map? Are you guys able to do stuff over here?
No, we can't be able to do anything out there designated wilderness.
It's been a long time since I've been in this last summer. It's bad.
Lots of game.
Yeah.
I can indirectly treat it, fire.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'll just start off. Are you guys familiar with Good Neighbor Authority Hall or MFRP? Basically, my position is funded through state dollars, general fund dollars. And part of it is kind of seed money to get this Good Neighbor Authority rolling on specific districts. In Clonach County specifically, we're on our sixth Good Neighbor Authority timber sale. And what that is, is it allows ODF to act as an agent of the Forest Service to lay out the timber sale, carry out the contract, administer it. And we retain those receipts for program revenue to put back into the project area for further restoration work. So the Fairwall All Lands Restoration Project is roughly thirty-five thousand acres. And it came about through discussion with the partnership here between ODFW, the Eco Trust, it's purple on the map there, their Fort Rock property. ODFW had made a summer use collared deer study that Autumn previously mentioned. And they have a critical use model for that whole area. So they're going to look at our timber sale treatments to see how they affect the deer populations and migration rates. So that's kind of the, the whole idea behind this. But in order to do these GNA sales, we have another part of the program that allows us to contract out NEPA surveys. It's a big bottleneck for the Forest Service to do. And through categorical exclusions, we can do a smaller survey rather than a full-blown environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, which is much larger. So this will be our first contract NEPA that is fully funded with program revenue from our Moberd sales over in the Chillicothe Ranger District. And so I'm working with the Forest right now. I hope to have this contract flown by May. If that contract goes out as planned, and we get all the acres surveyed through the green polygons in the middle, between the gill crest is the white blue, it's roughly eight thousand acres of commercial units. So we're probably looking at a timber sale open fiscal year twenty-three. And through that, I'm retrieving a, a large amount of ground, and we can retain those receipts for the next master agreement and hopefully do some more restoration work in that area. I'm also putting in for a landscape scale restoration grant. We owe ODFW to treat about eleven hundred acres on Gillcrest State Forest that touches that boundary of those GNA sales. So that'll further secure like some containment lines and fire road if you get in there.
Is that the blue area or?
The Gillcrest State Forest is the blue. And it'd just be treating that, that boundary that touches those green polygons.
Gotcha. Is it mainly lodge pool?
There's quite a bit of lodge pool. You get up a little bit higher and there's almost pine and a little bit of white earth. It's really thick, and you guys were talking about containment features. That was kind of the design element at the top of the Forest Service. Two of the main roads, or three of the main roads in that polygon are set containment features. So as we thin out those areas, we'll spread and secure those lines. And then a little bit more about our program. We've supported the Forest Service Timber Program. Last year, we laid out a sale called Cotton in the Thomas Creek Forest Show. Just the local district can have the capacity to lay it out in the timeframe needed to. So myself and our state forest foresters, we all went out and knocked it out in a few weeks. So we had that capacity to assist when we needed.
That's not a GNA though.
Not a GNA. It's just Forest Service appropriated funds into our service spa, and they just tell us what they're thinking. And we can give a yes or no if it's feasible, if there's anything going on. Other than that, we've done a service contract called Kirk and Mudd Army in the North Warner's, which is about a hundred and thirteen acres where we mechanically thin some Forest Service plantations, mostly lodge pool and almost pine. And then we are working on the Box GNA. It'll be the first GNA for Lake County. And it's the piece right across from the Warner Ski Hill. It's about a thousand acre piece of Forest Service ground that's surrounded by columns of pine. And we may be able to get a two hundred acre sale out of it. But Amy's found some funding in which we can put it into our service spa and treat the entire block hopefully. It's pretty limited for the slope.
Now, that, that NEPA was covered, right, within the North Warner? So it's already been... Then I see your South Warner project encompasses around the Skier Hill as well. Is there some overlap there between the North and South Warner?
Uh, no.
Shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's all just putting these puzzle pieces together and drawing these all land boundaries. It really makes a lot more funds available once we have that.
So the Box GNA is lacking roads.
There is a road through private property. That's one reason that the Forest asked us to take it on. There is a road through private property, uh, that's one reason that the Forest asked us to take it on, because legally for the Forest to, uh, harvest the timber there, they would need a legal easement. Uh, ODF has a little more flexibility, and we have a good working relationship with Collins Pine, so. My supervisor, Jonathan O'Seary, has already kind of recon the area, talked with Collins Pine, they would be interested, it just makes sense for them if you get the contract. Yeah, so it, it should, it should be a simple sale, we have it on the books with some.
Alright, good.
Yeah, one more slide, it's maybe we can do quick.
No pressure, no pressure. Again, I'm just a member of the Research and Forest Service, working for the Forest String Clameth, uh, member of the Clameth Lake Forest Health Partnership, again, it started in nineteen ninety-three, and I think. The key theme in all of this is, um, just in the last five years, um, partnerships really bring in relationships, partnerships, bringing together cross-boundary. Um, greatest benefit for landowners, um, land users, federal agencies, state agencies, and Clameth and Lake Counties. Um, and so really, um, everything that's been presented here is, um, active, um, restoration on landscape. The partnership is really focused on getting every dollar back onto the ground, um, you'll see the administrative, we don't have administration costs. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit, um, and so our focus isn't only on those landscapes that we recognize that are ready for treatment, but also there's. Relationships that are ready, um, and that's one of the key points, I mean, Amy, Daniel LaVell, um, Livingston, everybody in the partnership. Um, will preach, I guess, in a way, is, is not only the OSU publication, the eight-step process that, um, I think has been presented with you folks before. This eight-step process, process to identify landscapes, treat landscapes, um, but a key element in that is going where the relationships are ready. Um, Justin just identified, you know, leveraging partners, um, and funding sources, if, if we maybe hit a wall in one place, a partner. Nonprofit, a state agency, a federal agency might have capacity or expertise or legal authority to reach out in that landscape. And really capitalize on that, so the economy of scale, um, I guess a force multiplier in a way is this partnership looking at each of our partners to provide whatever they can. To treat these landscapes, and the treatment of landscapes, as you can tell, whether it's bratton, we identify the landscape in need, it burned. Chillicothe, we've identified the landscape in need, we have a joint chiefs in Chillicothe, we're the two four two, fire burn fourteen thousand five hundred acres. We're, we're behind the curve already, um, and so this active restoration, we, we, we've identified these landscapes, we're trying to treat them. Uh, we're not keeping it up fast enough, um, but it's partnerships, you know, working with our county commissioners, all the partners involved. To treat these landscapes, um, as fast as we can, and then, um, we mentioned the use of fire, the tools, the mechanical treatments. Um, tools in the toolbox, um, to keep those on the table and be innovative in that, so. With a strategic plan across public and private, again, it's an eight-step process, that publication, um, OSU publication that you can. Um, look at a hundred and seventeen pages with two partnership, uh, generated that, the Wahoo Films that we, um, shared that with you, that information. Um, and then, you know, that support to the private landowners, the technical, the financial, our contracting community. Um, the economic aspect is important to maintain this, um, not only the mapping, the inventory, the database that, um, it takes money to. To do that, um, but once we get that data, it can drive the funding sources and really lead us where we need to be of on-ground treatments. Um, communication and sharing the vision of landscape treatments, um, it really is a support to our landowners. Letting those folks, and some are like, know how they fit into their federal partners right across there, um, sharing that vision of what that landscape looks like. And what that landscape looks like when it burns, the leveraging of funds, um, those constraints, each funding source, again, we looked at the efficiencies in those. Um, and we're pretty proud with the Clameth Lake Forest Health Partnership, um, not only with Good Neighbor Authority, uh, the first region six Forest Service. Timber sale, um, was Paddock View right here in Clameth and Lake County within the partnership, a lot of firsts are here, um, and nowhere else in the state of Oregon. And it's because of our partners, um, the people we provide to work together, um, and buy in and, you know, support of everybody. So really leveraging those, providing capacity, um, and it's a million, millions of dollars in Clameth and Lake Counties that are. Rolling through treating these landscapes, which leads us to the discussion of, um, prescribed fire. You know, we know we can't maintain these landscapes with mechanical treatments and grant funding, a lot of our funders, such as OWEB, really wanna know how are we gonna maintain these landscapes? And we realize, um, fire is, is a tool in the toolbox, whether it's wildfire, resilience of our landscapes, getting them ready to receive it. Um, not that we want that necessarily, but to get those landscapes ready to receive fire in whatever capacity. Um, and recognizing that it, it is a tool to keep up with our landscape, and so Autumn mentions the community response plans. Um, there's house bills out there, there's a, there's a momentum to recognize and bring it back into the toolbox, and I think Clameth and Lake Counties. Are, are better to receive prescribed fire, uh, because we're preparing our landscapes, preparing our communities, and preparing. Um, the technical expertise that's gonna be needed to implement that successfully on the landscape, so. I think Clameth Lake Forest Health Partnership wrapping up, um, really good track record in the last five years of following our process, eight-step process. Uh, requesting funds, working with our private lenders, our federal partners, our nonprofits, bringing capacity. Um, and just trying to get good work done on the ground, so I appreciate your time, and I think that's a final part of it.
So what is, what is your guys' agencies? Are your guys' agencies outside of Clameth and Lake Counties seeing what Gerhart has done? And are you getting the recognition from your own agencies?
We are, yeah, we were actually just awarded the Chiefs and Under, Under Secretary Award back in December. So it, it, we've been recognized, yeah.
And I know Oregon Department of Forestry is pretty proud of Paddock View, and good, all the good neighbor. When you talk to some of the folks who do sale. They love the GNA.
Yeah.
They're trying to do more of it across the state, right?
They are, again, it comes back to key individuals that make it happen, um, in capacity, but yeah.
One of the reasons I asked about, you know, if you guys are going to our state reps and, and. Congress and that sort of thing, not only to change legislation on some funky laws, but to find. Some funding available for, uh, re-cor station or restoration or for that sort of thing, I mean, we're. I don't think you can pull it off this year, but if we start greasing the wheels to try to show what you guys are doing. And bring it to the state level and saying, hey, they're, they're kicking butt down here with how they're doing things. To maybe possibly get some kind of funding. So. I bring it to Senator Finley, he's very good at. Coming up with stuff, and he understands it, and he's very good for, you know, what you guys spent a lifetime of, ladies and seats, but. I love your guys' work, I love your guys' team.
Senator Finley actually used to be an FMO in Lakeview one time.
Oh, wow.
Back in the day, so.
We've got a connection.
Yeah.
For six years.
Yeah, on the meal website.
He really loves Lake County, and he's helped us tremendously. Even though we're getting beat up and bruised in a lot of areas, he's helped us a bunch, so. It's, it's a, just another avenue for, I mean, you know, we're not happy to rely on the grants so much, and. But I do appreciate you guys going after them, but I, I just want them to recognize the work that you guys are doing. That's why I'm asking if your agencies recognize what could be done with good partnerships, you know, it could change the whole world.
So the letter of support is in my homework of the week. And, uh, I'll be glad to put something together, it's a busy week though, see what I can do. And. And then, was there anything else for one present?
Okay, so, um, my apologies, I had to step out, I have another. I missed three phone calls from someone I needed to respond. Where are we in terms of, uh? Donation?
Are, are you wanting to talk about the KLFHP? Uh, contribution from the county to KLFHP?
We've not talked about it yet, okay.
We've given you one before.
The, the only thing, what, I got an email from Melanie that said you guys were thinking about it, could we give a presentation, so, that's what we did. But not that we know.
So you don't have an ask.
Basically, no, I have a presentation.
So if it's a possibility, we could go back to the partnership and then brainstorm ideas.
Give us a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, tell us kind of what your needs are, and kind of give us a place to go.
We see you with the work that obviously happening.
Right.
We totally understand that, that.
Do you have a, a ballpark, just so that we don't get too ahead of ourselves?
So.
We do try to raise for nine thousand dollars.
What were we giving, what did we give to the Central Oregon?
Just under five, so if you guys made it, you're under five.
Yeah, it was like four thousand something, I think is what we were giving to them, and we decided that we weren't going to renew that. Um, that we prefer to work with Clameth Lake.
But it doesn't mean. Yeah, so.
Okay, but that gives us a ballpark.
Gives you an idea.
I think we can get together and brainstorm some ideas and come up with a few options, maybe, yeah.
And we're going through budget right now and trying to figure out exactly where we are, and I think, uh, very wisely, our, our board is just kind of. Trying to take it easy, wanting to know exactly where we are with our budget, where our dollars are actually at, but, uh, we. There's a possibility, at least instead of giving those dollars to Central Oregon. If we could put them to something that we can actually see getting some real work done on boots on the ground, so to speak. Yeah, your presentation today, that's what we want to do, but, uh, it doesn't mean we'll admit to that, there's the potential.
It'll be better sooner than later, just so it'll be in our budget sooner than later.
Yeah.
Sooner than.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Not the one I put in the timeline.
I mean, it, whatever you can give us, we think we will use. I mean, it's that, it really is that simple, whether it be in an actual contract on the ground or. You know, a lot of this outreach and engagement stuff, we tend to not budget in, and it's a lesson that I learned. How much time it takes to put a stamp on a hundred and seventy-two envelopes, you know? How much time it takes to lick all of them, fold them, and, you know, I mean, that type of stuff, right now, the water shit council is kind of absorbing. Because we don't want to, we want all the money that we get to go towards the, the actual, like you said, on the ground, but. There's a cost to all of that, that we are not necessarily being fair to ourselves.
And engaging with landowners, it never stops, it's something, it's a constant that we always need to be doing.
Oh, we know.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, no, and we really appreciate it, and I think, I, I think it's very doable to do that, uh, that even five thousand that we've been kind of. Kicking around, it's, uh, it's kind of come down to a question of whether or not we can do more, and we can always do more at a later date too, so.
We can get that to you right away, I think, I think so.
Thank you so much, sorry I went so long.
Yeah.
No, 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 it was fine, it's all good. We, we took a break to lunch and everything's over.
Okay.
Thank you guys, your presentation. When are we putting fire on Paddock View?
Hopefully.
I guess there'll be a big splashdown that way.
A little bit of logging. I guess it'd be maybe this spring, a year from now.